To call tonight's meeting to order. This is the King City Cat Finding Commission at 6:00 on February 26, 2026. Could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner, got the air?
Here.
Commissioner Blair?
Here.
Commissioner Petrie?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Billis?
Here.
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 Matt President, Matt Carter, Peter Watts, Ronnie Smith.
Okay, we have two sets of minutes for approval. Have people had enough time to review the minutes? So could somebody make a motion for to approve the minutes for December 11, '24?
I do have a question on the minutes. You used to the program, my program is he, not they.
I don't assume, I just go by they. Would you like me to change that?
Yes.
The session?
I have no amendments to make. I do have a question, quick question for you, Ronnie. The minutes for the December 11 meeting include the revisions to the November 13 minutes, which puts them on record, I'm happy. Will the actual November 13 minutes be revised or is this the record? I just want to know.
Yeah, no, so I'll get to that.
We're good.
All those in favor of approval of the minutes, please raise your right hand.
Motion.
No one move?
No, we just...
I move with approval.
A second. Yeah, okay. Then we have the January 8, 25 minutes. Are there any issues? As per motion?
Motion to approve that January 8.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, we have one other issue I wanted to bring before we start the public hearing, and that is Commissioner Mitchell and I had a discussion regarding the program we had from Clean Water Services last two weeks ago, that there were grants available. And we'd like to have a discussion at the very end of the agenda this evening. Anybody in favor of having that discussion?
Sheriff Vayner?
Okay.
Sheriff Vayner?
I'd like to make a motion that we add that to the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
You have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, well, that will be at the end of the, very end of the agenda. Okay, with that, it's time to... ...start the public hearing. And we will have a staff report.
Thank you, Sheriff Vayner. So today, the hearing is dealing with the redevelopment of TFSNR Station 35 sites. There are fire stations located down the street, Highway 99, south. And it's a dated station. And so they are applying for approval to deconstruct the old station and rebuild a modern facility along with new landscaping, everything that goes along with that. So as I mentioned before, the King City redevelopment code does not have a section for the institutional zone, which is the zone that the TFSNR station is contained within. So when the institution, when the TFSNR station was annexed into the city, the city did not, they did not rezone it, they just kept it as institutional zone, but they did not incorporate it into institutional zone into the city zoning code. So that, therefore, we have to go to the Washington County Zone zoning code and apply those criteria to this specific project.
Is this something that the code, we need to add this to our code?
Yeah, but it's not something that I can just take from Washington County and put it on because of all...
I can just put it on the to-do list?
On their many other things to do. The code needs it to a total overhaul. But anyway, so it was pretty tricky for me to kind of find which code provision, which chapters from our code apply and which chapters from the Washington County code apply, just in a way that makes sense, that is in contradictory to itself. And so in my staff report, I found the chapters that were relevant. For the Washington County, I used chapters that specifically called out the institutional district and then applied that criteria to this. So those included Chapter 330, the institutional district, Chapter 411, which is screening and buffering, which refers to institutional zoning areas, and then 430, which is the stuff that you standard for public buildings. Again, this fire station qualified as a public building. And then for the King City Community Development Code, I use Chapter 1646, which requires community meetings for all development in the city. 16128, which is tree removal. 16132, which are parking and loading standards. 16152, which is the site plan review, which is kind of the general review for this entire project, and then 16164, which is the variance chapter. Applicants requested five variances for this development. A variance for setback standards, a variance for height standards within the setback, a variance for buffering and screening requirements, a variance for prohibited signs, and then a variance for a stall count means parking. The variance for the stall count, I actually told them that was no longer applicable because the city passed the chapter to eliminate a requirement for minimum parking, and their variance was to have, exceed that minimum parking, or go below the minimum parking requirement, so that no longer applies. But since the code amendments were adopted after their application was deemed complete, while that variance doesn't apply, I was not able to apply the new code to it. So it was kind of like, I'm not going to make, we can't force them to abide by a code that is no longer relevant, but then we didn't have the timing to apply that code to it. So kind of the weird limbo situation with that specific. As far as going into the approval criteria, there is no change of views proposed. It is a fire station currently, they're requesting to rebuild a fire station on top of the footprint of where the current fire station already is. So that more or less kind of brought us to some of the variances that they were requesting. But insofar as my findings for all the approval criteria within the Washington County code, maximum height for something in the institution is 100 feet, which actually makes sense because if you go down there, there are AT&amp;T utility towers, which would, are obviously the fire station's not 100 feet tall, but they've met within that criteria. And then the screening and buffering, so I used the screening and buffering 411 chapter from Washington County as opposed to our own chapter for approval criteria, because the screening and buffering in Washington County specifically refers to institutional zones, whereas our landscape and buffering does not. So insofar as the screening and buffering requirements, the Washington County code has pretty strict standards. They consider a public building to be a buffering type 3, which requires four trees, four candy trees, four understory trees, and 100 trucks per 100 feet around the perimeter of the building. And they were able to meet all of that criteria except for in the southwest corner of the lot, which is where they're proposing to put trash enclosure and where also the utility towers are. So those utility towers preclude planting trees and stuff underneath where that area is. So that will be touched on again when we get to the variances. There has been some coordination with the city building department, and then the relevant agencies that mostly are interested in this are Clean Water Services, as well as the working department of transportation, and TFSNR has direct access to Highway 99. They'll be working closely coordinating with ODOT to ensure that their construction doesn't interfere with any other, that their access remains. Included in their site development is also a modern stormwater facility. So on the south end of the property, like the southeastern end, they have a big stormwater facility that'll be vegetated, and all of that, applicant getting some more details about that, but they provided us with a stormwater management plan. For, insofar, just to sum up, all of the Washington County criteria for institutional zones, which again are very broad, because these institutional zones is really a lot of different things. County truly adds to account for all kinds of types of land use, but they hit all the criteria for everything that they were required within the confines of a public building in that space. So Washington County code was, the criteria was met. For the King City code, so they held a community meeting, they provided us with affidavits that they had a meeting on October 9th, and all of the necessary pieces of their application were included for that. The tree removal piece, so they're removing, proposing to remove seven trees. Again, as I mentioned, so they have a temporary facility being put in place. That temporary facility was reviewed and approved through type 1 per Washington County's administrative code. It included the removal of six trees. That included the removal of seven trees, because they have to put the temporary, it's basically just like a mobile home, on top of the trees, so those trees need to be removed. And the fire, the firemen and the firewomen need to be, they need to have a place to be temporary housing, temporary use apparatus to be put in place during construction of the new facility. And so we approved that. That included the removal of seven trees, and then there are six remaining trees on site that need to be approved through the planning commission type 3. Those include Douglas fir, a pine, and a couple pears, and a couple arborvitae. But again, those are, those are necessary for construction activities. I went out on site, and you know, they're nice trees, the Douglas fir in particular on the east, on the west side of the property, this big giant Douglas fir, but you can understand how you would need to, if they're doing an entire remodel, an entire new landscaping, an entire new buffering around the entire site, it would be necessary to remove some trees because of the buffering requirement. All our trees below where large trees are. For the tree removal, I am recommending... Parking and loading, again, as I mentioned, what they originally applied for was no longer relevant, is no longer applicable, but if I, in fact, and just as a creative exercise, I applied the new code insofar as the actual space allotments, and their, their parking spaces were, well, within the maximum allowed parking spaces as required in the new code. So that was met. Then yeah, the site plan review. So as I mentioned, it's just, it was really a matter of juggling these two different types of stuff. So I'll get into the variances. So as I mentioned, they requested four variances. The first one was Chapter 418, and four thirty in Washington County. So Washington County for public buildings and institutional zone has a 20-foot minimum setback for buildings. And their setback on the northern side is nine feet, so they're requesting a variance for that. The reason being was statistical for moving in the truck, and also the fact that they're rebuilding the station on top of the old station. If you look at the criteria for approval in the variance, it kind of gives you a broad list. It says approve or deny, application for a variance is based on evaluation of all the following criteria. I interpret that as meaning it's an evaluation of all, it doesn't necessarily have to mean that all of that criteria is out of mind. The King City also has a, 15208010, which allows for certain, certain conditions to be met, where there's instances where a development proposal serves the community as a whole, and takes across all the variances. Decision would fly because the fire station does serve the community as a whole, and the city would want to ensure that our fire station and our emergency services be as adequate space to do all the... Before the setback, I am recommending approval. For buffering and screening, as I mentioned, all sides of the fire station meet the buffering and screening requirement. The east side does not have buffering requirements because it faces a public street. And then the southwest side is where the variance is, because there's a lack of trees due to the structures that are already there, and the structures that are being proposed to put in place, including a generator, which I'd imagine could be used for emergency services. Recommend it. And screen variance is also to approve. The building height has been setback, it's more or less a symptom of the reduced setback, so they have the ease that is higher within the setback, so it's just these two variances have to take you back off one another. So again, I recommend approval for that. And then they are requesting a variance for a sign, they want to have a digital reader sign on site that will update and help people information about emergency situations, and also when they're open, maybe activities, or allow them to be on the surface of that. All of this could be summed up, I, for the entire application, I recommend approval with conditions, conditions being at the end of the staff report, but mostly just that the applicant, TFSNR, Soderstrom, whatever. About, except for, you know, the relative market, or any utility company, I think, I do, this is the farm water and all the new utility infrastructure. I've included Clean Water Services list of conditions. That's pretty much the gist of it. So we've heard comments back from Clean Water Services, and I've incorporated those comments into the report.
Any questions of staff?
The tree that you, has to be removed, it's a mature tree. Can you tell me what that, which one that is, and where it is?
Yeah, so it's on the southwest side of the property. Comments, the comments of the arborist who went out there, it's a high cone production, four ruined wood, large bore holes, so it's not entirely healthy.
Okay.
So we rated it a two out of a three rating system.
Okay.
On the left, southwest corner.
Yeah, I'm seeing a white pine there, 11301, I'm just wondering...
11303.
Okay, 11303, is it a nest on the property?
Any requirements for those tree removals?
Not really, in the same way that mitigation would be for like an HDA.
Okay. Very tight site.
Yeah, mm-hmm. Yeah, but I'm concerned with the ease of which, it's in the way, so we're going to take it down, I just wanted to make sure that it's good reason for it.
Further questions, yes? Can everyone's ready to step up to court? All right.
Go ahead. Will that Will's Road be connected to Versailles at all, or will it still be cut off?
It will be cut off. People, I guess in the past, you know, Versailles has like a gate, right? And so people kind of hop the curb and then use the fire just to get on the highway and vice versa. And so they originally put that gate up. And now there's actually some concern with the new habitat for community development because it kind of moves some of the barriers away.
Yeah.
About maybe like sticking a hole there or something.
What about the pedestrian access, were they planning on doing that?
Well, there, yeah, there's going to be a sidewalk extension along Will's that will connect to the sidewalk that was built in the habitat site.
Are they, that sidewalk, under their jurisdiction or ours, or ODOT? I'd like to see some street trees.
ODOT jurisdiction begins in the property.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Scheduled, scheduled public hearing, the public hearing is open, and I request that anyone who wants, is interested to state their feelings regarding the matter being considered. Failure to raise an issue in person via Zoom or by letter to the planning commission precludes raising that issue at a subsequent time on appeal. If the planning commission decision is appealed, council may or may not allow new evidence. You may also name and address any other approval criteria you think apply to this decision. If you wish to speak for, against, or comment in any way, when I call for testimony, please identify yourself as wishing to speak. You can do this by raising your hand physically or digitally, or by typing your name in the chat box. When called to speak, give your name, address, and make your statement. The maximum time allotted for testimony will be three minutes. For individuals, 10 minutes for the applicant, and five minutes for applicant's rebuttal. If your testimony would be repetitious, but you would like the opportunity to appeal the decision, you must sign the hearing sign-in sheet located at the rear of the council chamber, or type your name in the chat box, or let staff know, and they will type your name in the chat box. Only those who have appeared before the planning commission in person via Zoom or in writing will be allowed to speak on appeal of this item to the city council. Please note that unless there is a continuance of this hearing, if a participant saw requests before the conclusion of the hearing, the record shall remain open for at least seven days after the hearing. If the record remains open, such an extension shall not be subject to the so-called 120-day limit. So I call to order the hearing case regard land use 2404, land use action for the construction and redevelopment of a new TBR station number 35. And I apologize, I've got unlaid in, and it makes me listen, so I apologize if I'm not as clear as I would like to be. Are there any members of the planning commission who wish to abstain in this matter? Hearing none? Do any of the members of the planning commission wish to declare a conflict of interest? Go ahead.
Oh yeah, my name is David Nicolai. My, my father is the chairman of the board, and I have a financial stake in a construction supply company, so it's possible that some of our product could potentially be used on this project potentially.
Okay. Anyone else?
Sure. I have a conflict, but I'd like to make two disclosures. One is that many years ago, the Treasury Department was trying to reclassify volunteer firefighters as employees if they received any remuneration or other payments, could have potentially created some wage and hour issues. I did a significant amount of legal work on that issue. The entity that directed me in those efforts and that paid for those efforts was TFSNR. To the best of my recollection, that work ended in 2008 when Congress intervened on behalf of fire districts throughout the nation. The entities that were most negatively impacted were rural fire protection districts, but because of TFSNR's status and reputation in the industry, they were the entity that took on doing that work. I did several other projects for TFSNR. To the best of my knowledge, I haven't done any legal work for them since 2011. The attorney that I believe is still their attorney, and I were in the same law firm, he left that law firm prior to me, I left that law firm in 2018. Additionally, I have done legal work for city fire departments and fire districts, multiple ones, including the siding of fire stations, multiple fire stations, including current work, these are all jurisdictions that are not TFSNR jurisdiction. It's given me some insight into employee firefighter and volunteer retention and other issues, but does not cause, does not cause me to have an actual conflict or what's termed an issue conflict. And I believe that I can fairly and objectively advise you on this application without any doubt, but I want to be totally transparent for this public mission. And if any of you have questions for me or about my prior work, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, just a second, attorney. Anybody have any questions, the city attorney? Hearing none? Okay, is there any member of the audience that would like to challenge the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter? Anybody online? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any individual member of the commission? Ronnie? Okay. Again, to remind you, please be aware that if you fail to raise an issue in person by, or Zoom, or by letter today to the planning commission, you will, but be unable to raise that issue if this matter is appealed. Okay, go ahead. This is the here, the applicant.
I can do a little intro maybe? My name is Erica DeHusky, I'm with Soderstrom Architects for TFSNR, architect for the project, so I am the project manager from the design team side. So we're going to tell you guys a little bit about the project tonight, and any questions you might have. To start with, TFSNR is going to kind of go through a little background of why this station, why this needs to happen, so you guys will have a little bit of background on what's going to happen.
Technology is always interesting.
I'm near in my bow.
It was so much simpler if I could challenge, shout it right on.
Right, King City. My name is Corinne Haining. I'm one of the public affairs officers with Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue. I will keep my slides brief, but we always like to, for what we're presenting to community or different groups, um, just do a very strict overview of who we serve. And so very briefly, this is a map of our district. We have the largest fire district in the state of Oregon, covering 390 square miles and serving more than 550,000 residents. Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue formed back in 1989 when Tuolton Rural Fire Protection District and Washington County Fire District One merged. And fun little side note, King City was part of Tuolton Rural Fire Protection District at that time. So you've been with us since our inception and this month is when we celebrate our 36th birthday. Um, but since then, we have grown to operate in 11 cities and parts of four counties that you can see on this map. Um, it's, you may be able to note that little red circle is Station 35 that we'll be discussing in more depth in a minute. I know the print on this graph is pretty small, but mostly just to show that emergency medical response remains our most frequent call type. However, also as all hazard response agencies respond to fire, hazardous materials, and other specialty calls, uh, which may be less frequent, but still require a large response, heavy assets, and specialized training. Um, you can also note that for this incident snapshot referring to King City, the incident count for 2024 that you see only reflects the calls within city limits. So that's just how our reporting system, um, also to be able to generate the data that we have for the different cities that we serve. But we do know that Station 35 in King City typically responds, as all our stations, typically responds to a broader, what we refer to as a station zone that covers the community even just beyond, obviously, the municipal bounds. So, um, the, the incident count this past year for Station 35's station zone totaled above 3,600 calls. Significantly more than city limits. It's important to our residents, uh, it's important to us, for our residents to know, TBSNR has always been data informed. So, um, we reference all different types of data to help inform us on many different fronts. Our community's priority, our, our priority for the community and what the community deserves is fast and reliable response. So we don't just throw a dart on a map to determine where a station is going to be. Data informs our deployment, which includes not only the station placement, but as well as staffing of personnel and assigning of apparatus needs. So which type of apparatus will be assigned to a particular station that impacts and maximizes our overall system. These, uh, again, I know the print is really small, um, but each of these charts reflects different aspects of the station zone, of that broader response area that Station 35 serves. Um, whether we're looking at day of the week, by month, full incident count, each of these is for a five-year period. So, um, we know that call categories, whether it's fire EMS, these all remain steady. So over the five, over the past five years, we are seeing mostly steady call volumes, um, time of day. So we're not seeing any major location shifts of incidents, which provides data and helps to support the maintaining of Station 35 at the same location. The station that we are planning to rebuild in November of 2021, voters approved general obligation bonds to fund in part improvements and upgrades to stations throughout our district. So, um, part of my role in this is, um, coming in the frame, we will be actively working to help keep the community involved, not only as to the information that we're providing you this evening, but project updates. So what, what folks can be anticipating into the summer when they start to see things happening. Uh, so I just wanted to provide a little bit of an outline of some of the outreach that we're planning to do. We are, probably the first thing that you'll see that's on my, um, high on my to-do list is we'll be getting a project sign up for folks to see. This reflects their bond dollars at work. Um, but we'll be utilizing the reader board that we still have there while it is still there. Uh, we plan to do a mailing to the community. There'll be, as it gets closer to the actual groundbreaking, there will be a project webpage where folks can go to see periodic updates, as well as, um, different community meetings ongoing. So we're, our, our crew that responds out of Station 35 are actively involved with CTO 4K as it meets periodically. Um, and just also local media as opportunities. So, um, one of the things that we are excited about for Station 35 is that of those dimensions to be receiving improvements on our list that were indicated through the bond, um, Station 35 will be the first that includes certain features that focus on firefighter wellness. So now I will pass it off to Director Heidi Hicks.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. You mentioned notice. Um, I hope you have planned to do notice to all of the areas that are currently not in the city of King City, but out all the way to Roy Rogers. That area someday will be in the city, but it's not now. I think it's very important that notice go there. And I don't know whether you want to send a notice to the south side of Bull Mountain because a great deal of that is not in a city. It's not in Tigard.
We can talk about that. Um, I don't know, as we were discussing the different options and, and landed on including a mailing, um, we certainly intend to have it be beyond what the mailing notice was for the community requirement. Um, and we need to get back to you on where, where that line ends up being. But we do plan to utilize, Ronnie and I have been in touch and I have, I still owe him an article for the King City newsletter. Um, but of course, we will be utilizing social media as well. So, um, I'm just wanting, wanting it to be the most effective and most meaningful for your community.
Well, the other question that I have is, construction has started for the town center, which I know eventually we'll, we will have another station there. Um, will Station 35 be the primary, uh, support for that area? Because people will start moving in there probably early this next year.
I, I would.
Those are my questions.
Thank you. Happy to come.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good.
So as we embark on construction.
And you are?
I'm sorry, Heidi Hicks, Director of Logistics, Vice-Curating Association. Sorry. Um, so as we embark on our construction, um, service is of course a still a priority. So one of the choices that we made is to put the temporary station on the current property to ensure we continue the same service levels as everybody's been seen and is used to. In addition to that, as you can see by the picture on the right-hand side where 35 is, we have quite a few stations that surround Station 35. And as always, those who need added support to the area, which would include the question that was just asked, how will we support that area without a station? 35, yes, but there are surrounding stations that also will cover it. And that's something that we've always done. So that's not different, it's not new. Those stations always continue to help with service to those areas. So a lot of times if, if they're out on a call that takes a long period of time, they do something called a move-up, or another station actually comes into the station. That type of service will continue even through construction. I want to make sure that everybody's aware, we will continue the same service. Talking about the new station, um, we have a lot of new objectives when we're building new fire stations. And this is kind of like information that's old as you develop stations and as you grow as a district grows. So our main three focuses with stations, I guess adding to station capabilities and programming, is to focus heavily on health and safety, to focus on future staffing, and to focus on flexibility. So increasing station security, a huge focus on decontamination, wellness and recovery for the firefighters, and then staffing, so building fire stations that will staff the future. Not just how can that, how can that area grow? And what type of staffing may need to be, need to have available, right? So when we look at the next few slides, these are the types of things we're trying to address with this. So firefighters are significantly at higher risk for cancer. And the NSPA or National Fire Protection Agency, which provides guidelines for fire safety, these are kind of the key components for helping reduce the initial exposure to cancers for firefighters. Number two is highlighted there, which is decontamination practices. We have heavy focus on that going forward. We do decon practices now, we're taking it to the next level with the future fire stations. Next slide, please. So one of those focuses is designating zones within the fire station. So hot or red zone, that is the area where contaminated equipment is actually cleaned, decontaminated and stored in a way and in a manner that does not continue to spread the contaminants throughout the firehouse. The yellow zones or the warm zones are designated to be the transition zone between the hot and the cold zone. So these are areas traditionally where you would store gear that's been cleaned, that's ready to be used. Um, it also can be walkways between the green living quarters and those hot, warm zones. Um, and there is a lot of effort put into the HVAC system with negative pressurized systems and high rate of air exchange in those certain areas. Keep all of the stuff where it needs to belong, which is out of the green area, which is the living quarters of the firehouse. So again, this is an effort to reduce exposure to the firefighters, knowing they're at a higher risk for. This kind of highlights some of those things that we're trying to do. So again, the carcinogen reduction with HVAC equipment, protecting the living quarters, separating those with that, that we have or yellow zone. And this is kind of working on overall health. So we'll talk a little bit about recovering wellness spaces in some of the future slides, but just providing very clear environments where the different activities. So one of those, again, is, uh, is around acclimating to weather. So this is a new concept, I wouldn't say new, new concept, but it's a concept with a lot more focus on fire service. So we are in a pretty moderate type climate, right? So we are lucky in that. There's others where they, they operate in significantly colder, significantly hotter areas. But we do still have a swing or weather, we're seeing one more every year. So one of the, the concepts is to provide an environment where when they do their physical activities, they can acclimate to the outside weather. So as we move forward, we're creating gyms that have the ability to bring the outside air in. So when they're exercising, they can acclimate to whatever, what weather is outside. Also being able to try to provide ways to do physical fitness outside. Being able to do some of the activities like throwing their ladders or, or working with hoes, that sort of thing. We're trying to create environments where they can acclimate to that weather. So there is better reaction time, obviously. It's better for their health and safety to be acclimated to the weather than to go through a shock from being inside a cooled environment to being inside a hot. So another one is we're going to break that heated floor. Um, so this improves safety by reducing flips. So as you can imagine, you get a little bit of rain here in the Pacific Northwest. I don't know if you've seen that or not, but when they bring their rigs back in, obviously water falls off their rigs. It falls onto the floor, floors are wet, right? The radiant heated floors are going to help dry that quicker. Additionally, heat rises. So as your heating goes up, you have big bay doors that are open when rigs are going in and out. So you lose a lot of heat. When you're heating from the top down, it can take longer to do that. And it does just provide a nice warmer environment with upwards and downwards. One of the other features that we're doing is the bi-fold doors on our fire stations. Traditionally, we have the roll-up door. The roll-up doors are a little bit slower in operation. So when we talk about response time and wanting to have the best response that we can, these doors operate much quicker. Um, they also are low maintenance. They're also designed in a way to withstand more catastrophes. So the framework of them is built in a way that you can handle better. So the structure of them is much more durable than the structures of the walls. Next question? Um, again, with some concepts around health and safety, wellness and recovery, obviously, physical activities, right? So we just have to posture better, um, just overall health and wellness by being able to work out and do the physical activities. That includes acclimating to weather, which we've talked about already. We also are incorporating multipurpose rooms. So rooms like after, you can imagine they go on some pretty significant events sometimes. We all recover in different ways. We all kind of get back to ourselves in different ways. Some people like it quiet, dark, and cool. Other people like light, bright, I want the outside elements, I like people around me. Um, and some people maybe need a combination of both. Um, so what we've tried to incorporate into our fire stations is way for everybody to recover. Regardless of how you recover best in circumstances, there is that option in our new firehouse.
Will the individual dorm rooms be individually available? Can you?
They all have individual mini foots in them. The windows as well in the dorm rooms are operable. If I want the outside air, I can let outside air in. Finding those options, that's one of the major focuses. And then the dorm rooms also, we're doing a lot with sound mitigation. So there's quiet between. Um, traditional bunk rooms are shared and you can have people who have an apnea machine, which is disruptive to somebody else trying to sleep, that sort of thing. And sleep is very important when it comes to health and wellness. They're also interrupted many times throughout the night, so sleep is interrupted. Whatever sleep they can get, we want it to be the best sleep. Another feature is the improved security around the station itself. Um, so we are incorporating cameras on the exterior of the building in anywhere where there could be a hiding spot where they can't have eyes on it all the time. There are cameras. Actually, this slide that's on the upper, my corner of that, I guess, if you're actually looking, those are our actual cameras that we have installed at our station today. So we are expanding that when we build our new stations to get all nooks and crannies around the station.
All of these things you're talking about, you have already incorporated these to other stations?
These are the ones, yes, we're just extending that. But for instance, we do have cameras outside doors where community members come so they can look at the camera before going to the door. But we don't have the video com, they're separated right now. So we've got a speaker phone and then they have a camera that's separate. We're going to a new device that's all inclusive, that has the camera and the speaker together. Um, and then again, we'll add cameras in, in a lot of the corners and things they can't have their eyes on. The other thing that we're adding is the gates, um, across the personal parking area and stuff to protect the fuel, the generators, entrance to the back of the station. Thank you. Um, another concept we did around health and wellness, deeper staffing, staffing flexibility. For that, for the general, the whole environment, for the things we're doing, individual showers instead of locker rooms and common space lockers, as well as the individual dorm rooms. So as you can imagine, right, the flexibility with staffing, if I've got a men's and women's locker room, I have to staff it based on the availability of locker space, which makes it really hard to staff appropriately. Going to this type of environment allows us to staff with whatever body is available. It doesn't matter at that point. Um, additionally, uh, we are adding extra dorm rooms. So we're adding dorm rooms above and beyond current staffing levels. So that way, if we need to add another engine, another rescue, another medic, we have the flexibility to do that. In our new station design, we're adding more dorm rooms and we are adding battalion chief quarters to every station. So again, it's for flexibility. We need to move the battalion chiefs or the quarters. We need to move the battalion chief or the stewardess.
Right, with only eight dorm rooms and then one of the battalion chiefs, meaning you can only have eight to nine firefighters on staff at a time?
Yeah, which is, that is basically... But what we have is not, not any of our stations.
How many folks do we have currently?
There are four, per shift. It's going to double the capacity.
The rooms be shared based on the shift that they're on, or does that room belong to that individual?
Yes, during their shift, it's an individual room. So the way, and I think the next slide actually shows the floor plan, there are, there's, it's a little hard to see, but there's four lockers that are pass-through lockers between the dorm room and the hallway. They each have their own individual locker room, and then that bunk room is theirs during their shift. It's not shared with anybody else.
Then when their shift ends, though, it goes to somebody else?
Yeah, yeah. So all their personal belongings are in the locker, then that's okay. So as you can imagine, a lot of changes. They do require, though, more programming we face. So that's one of the reasons why the footprint has grown a little bit. It also was needed to go up to a second store in order to get all of that programming in. So the first floor, including the upper left-hand level one, has all of that decontamination that we talked about. A big chunk of that area is the ability to have the anything that's contaminated separated from the rest of the environment, cleaned, dried, and then put into a storage area for turnout.
Decontamination facilities, what sort of cleanup do you do with the decontamination units? Do you just, is it their on-site processing?
So that's a great question. So right now, there aren't any specific guidelines on what has to be done with the waste contamination from that. However, the NFPA does have suggestions, and we do try to follow those suggestions.
It's mostly washed down, and then it just goes down the drain?
Yeah.
How many contaminants are there?
So basically, Brian, do you have a answer on this one? Maybe I turn it on to you. So essentially, what you're getting is anything from the fire. So you have plastics, you have wood, you have things, all those carcinogens get into the...
Okay.
And then that means, so anything you would see like from a fire, those are the kind of things that are washed off. They go on a vehicle accident, there's dirt, water, frying from the ground, or being on my knees. So that also is the waste that's going in there. The turnout washers themselves, which I think is probably what you're referring most to, those use a lot of water. So it is diluted significantly. Like, it's a lot of water per cycle.
I could add to that on the fire team before they determine the station.
Could you come up because the mic won't be able to catch?
Sure, be very brief, but I'll just give you a little more feedback on how we manage our decon in the field.
And you are?
I'm Brian Smith. So after a fire, there's a primary decon.
What's your role at a twelfth and valley fire?
Yeah, I'm a division chief of government public affairs. Hope this is helpful. But so after a fire occurs, there's a primary decontamination process that occurs in the field. That includes taking, you know, washing off our turnouts, putting them in bags, and putting in our second set of turnouts if we have those with us. And then washing the engine, washing the hose, and then back to the fire station where more decon happens there. Most of the contaminants are actually deconned in the field.
So you use water in the engine or truck, depending on what it is?
Correct.
So the decon is just primarily detergent, not other chemicals?
That's correct, yeah.
So in the field, is it just pretty much water that you're using, you're like holding yourself off, basically?
Water, yes. It's getting the primary contaminants off in the field. That's just to get the most of it off that we can. And that's also intended to keep contaminants out of the fire engine and apparatus. And we don't always have our second set of turnouts with us, but when we do, we can turn, put those on. We have clean turnouts on, our contaminant turnouts are in plastic bags, taken back to the fire station, and put through the washing machine.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, decontamination on first floor, including the bays as well, which are the red ones. And then the second floor is our living quarters, all of our green space. So we have right-sized some of the living and amenities spaces. Created some wellness rooms, the recovery rooms, as we call them, single occupant dorm rooms, and a single occupant shower suite. As well, in our layout for the station, the gym is on the second floor. But as you can see, it's offset from the rest of the building, and that is to mitigate noise and that sort of activities that occur in this.
Once again, I'm Erica Jan-Caskey with Southern State Architects. So now we're going to walk you through the proposal itself, what we're planning on doing. So like Max said, the station site is located on the south side of town, right along Highway 99. It's about an acre and a half, surrounded by some residential zones, and then the PGE substation on the west side and Highway 99 on the east side. So the current station is quite a bit smaller. It's about forty-seven hundred square feet, split up over, I want to call it one and a half stories, because the apparatus is a single story, and then the living quarters are stacked. It's a very tight site. The original building was built in the seventies. It had a seismic upgrade in the early two thousands, but I don't believe that enhanced any living spaces of any kind at that point. So it's outdated, and it's time to make it the best for everybody involved. So these are just some views of what, is there currently to kind of give you all a sense of what it looks like and what we're proposing? So up there with the front view, you can see that it is already about ten feet from the existing property line. That's to keep it in line with the existing fire signal on Highway 99. The front driveway to kind of the return section there on the south side with a bit of a landscape area. That's the part as we get into later where our stormwater is going. In the back, there is some tall screening that will maintain as much as possible, and obviously augment where we can't maintain it. And then there are some existing cell towers on the property that are going to remain, but that is another constraint that's kind of affected how the site winds up laying out. So, once again, kind of an existing view, but also our temporary station. We're going to take that current landscape island on the south side of the property, and that's where the temporary parking will be, along with a manufactured home that will function as a crew residence, and kind of an enclosed parkport type structure that will function as the temporary apparatus bay during construction. And then the rest of the site will be turned over for construction purposes. We are working with PGE. We're going to take access from the PGE property on the west side for construction crews only. It's not going to be for the public to cut through. But since you can see the very, very small sliver between the proposed footprint and the edge of the temp station there, that way, Kirby Nagelhaus Construction, who's our general contractor, can have full access to the site and get done what they need to get done. So this is what we're proposing to do. You can see that the footprint of the station is a fair amount bigger than the current footprint. Our new station is about fifteen thousand, seventeen thousand square feet, with a floor plate of about eight thousand, over two stories. Like I mentioned, we're keeping the station in roughly the same location on site so that we can continue to use that existing fire signal on Highway 99 and not have to negotiate anything new with ODOT on that one. We're also keeping it pushed towards the front of the site, so we have full maneuvering on that back west side. So the idea is the trucks should never have to back in. This lets them circle around and pull in street. And it's sized so that TBSNR can bring in any of their apparatus, even if, like, in the future, you guys need a ladder truck or something like that, there's space for that vehicle to maneuver on site. New public parking on the front portion of the site, and then that secure gate we mentioned, separating the public portion from staff parking and the generator and the trash enclosure in the back. And then the new stormwater facilities up there in what is currently a landscape area. But unfortunately, in order to meet all clean water services, stormwater requirements, those trees, in addition to being in the way of our temporary station, are in the way of the stormwater pond. So that kind of goes back to why we're pulling those out, but we are replacing them with new landscaping there.
Question? Are you sure rotation of your generator for your new system, where's the... Do you have an existing generator on site?
There is an existing generator. If you go back, I'm not quite sure if it shows up on the previous one.
I looked, I didn't see.
Yeah, so it is basically in that same location. It's maybe a little bit closer to the cell tower than what we're proposing. Also, a much smaller generator than what we're proposing to use for the new station.
And doing something for noise abatement? And when do you have to test it, and how often, and what hours, do you know?
I know we have generator testing, but I'm, yeah, not yet. So we do generator testing once per month for twenty to thirty minutes at a time. It's done during the day, yes. We don't do that night. And then it only is used if we lose power or something, but there is the enclosure around it, and that does mitigate the sound pretty well.
So anticipate any level increase in the generator noise?
No.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And it's going to be just like the existing generator. It's a dual-fuel natural gas and propane generator. So I directly into the natural gas line as well as having a propane tank in case of the natural gases. So Max mentioned the variance, as we're asking. So we wanted to kind of show that in a little bit of a graphical format for you here. Item number one is where the twenty-foot setback would be if we were to follow that. So we're maintaining the same setback that the current station has. We're not getting any closer to the property line, but we're also not complying with that twenty-foot setback. So we're requesting a variance in order to keep that alignment with Highway 99. As Max mentioned, going along with that, the building's going to be taller than what is technically allowed in that setback area. We've got a slide a little bit further on that goes through the details of exactly what that looks like. We've got that reduced buffer on the southwest side, in part because of the existing cell phone towers that are not moving. And then we're requesting a digital reader board sign out of that. One thing that we did want to mention, we didn't file it as an official variance, but we want to ask for approval on it, is the code essentially mandates that before you can get occupancy on the building, you have to complete all your stormwater facilities. Well, the way we're phasing this project, we can't build the stormwater facilities until they've moved out of the temporary station and into the permanent station. And so I think we all understand that that would be temporary occupancy, not a final occupancy. But we want to make sure we get approval for that temporary occupancy before the stormwater facilities are complete, because the only way we're going to be able to build them is if we remove temporary station.
You going to talk about the ODOT restrictions on the intersection and the traffic signal later?
And I can mention that now. So ODOT has essentially decided at a higher level that they are not going to allow new connections to state highways in general. It's not unique to the station, we've run into it on some other projects. They don't want that kind of strange interaction, I guess, with the existing, with the state highways. So in order to keep a fire signal on the site, we essentially have to keep the existing one. They're not going to make us pull it out, but if we were to ask to say shift that fifty feet south, they would not grant that approval. So again, that goes back to why we're putting the station in the same location, and it lets us keep that existing driveway access, keep that existing street slot, keep that existing fire signal.
That's definitely concerning with ODOT, it's not about traffic and congestion in front of the station?
Correct, yeah. ODOT does, Willis is technically as part of the right-of-way for Highway 99. So we do have to install sidewalks for their standards as part of this project, and driveway aprons as part of their standards for this project, but they do not have a fruit tree. So you can kind of see, this is what our landscape for the project is proposed to be. Definitely not putting back a barren wasteland. But it's focused on screening, it's focused on greenery. The storm pond will be vegetated, so it's not just a dry and whole ground. Just kind of gives you a sense of, in general, the landscape.
So ODOT's requiring sidewalk. This is the first time that I've noticed Willis. Sorry?
I think that's how Willis Street likes it.
Yeah, yeah. Earlier, I was like, what is this thing? So Willis will continue to be there with a sidewalk next to it.
I suppose you have some questions, or just one. So I see throughout the documents and on Google Earth that it's Willis, who spells Willis, and then also just Will. Which one is it? I see Willis and Will throughout both the documents.
We should ask ODOT about that.
So it's supposed to be an access road?
They're calling it a frontage road, and I don't know that I could tell you what ODOT is. Ah, okay.
It was, it's part of the old road. There's pieces along, you should go out, you see the Pacific Road, that was the original 99. And it sits of a tier in there.
So I think they basically just kind of torn it out. It's there, eventually, Highway 99 may be so wide as to have it cease to be a separate street, and it will be part of Highway 99, that's why it's part of their right-of-way. Right now, it's kind of this stub that is essentially just used to serve the fire station. Because like we were mentioning earlier, there is that gate across where it's high that things are not under construction, it's typically closed to prevent neighborhood cut through. And that's at least our understanding of how it's going to wind up at the end of construction. Obviously, that kind of is up to ODOT and the city ultimately. But the intent is to, with the exception of getting out and back from Highway 99, we're not putting traffic.
You have the benefit of being able to have lights and horns and make a lot of noise.
So this is a section through the building and the adjacent property. So you get a little bit of a sense of the height setback, or the height requirement we're asking for, and the setback reduction. So the adjacent property does have about a five-foot elevation gain between our fence and where the closest apartment buildings sit. And then those are, I think, your three-story units. So their top of their building is taller than ours, even with the increased height. The way the height restriction works per code is there's an allowable height, and then you go up at a forty-five degree angle until you get to the hundred-foot max. So you can see it's kind of a faint dashed line. But that is what the height setback technically would restrict everything to. So we're not intruding on it much, just a little bit at our ease lines. We take our roof slope up at, I want to say it's a three and twelve, rather than the forty-five degree angle that the standard allows. And then that height is really a function of, in order to have a fourteen-foot-high vehicle in the first floor with a little bit of space above it for your lights and your mechanical equipment and things like that, and then your floor structure, that's our second floor at about eighteen feet above the first floor. And so that then drives, even with a reasonable nine-foot ceiling in your bedrooms at the ease, that rapidly adds up, and we're at about thirty-one and a half feet. That's what we're looking at for that one. But like you can see, it's pretty much on level with the building next door, so it's not like we're doing this next to a single... it's not like we're doing this next to a single-family residence. Kind of a comparable situation there. Um, just to give you an all, an idea of what this building is gonna look like, um, this is our, our current conceptual rendering of the project. We are designing to the essential facility standards, the, the risk category for seismic. So the goal is it will be fully operational following seismic events. Um, new landscaping, improved stormwater facilities.
What level are you expecting for what level of earthquake?
I don't know that I know the magnitude of earthquakes that this category four sets. I would have to do some research on that one. It's, it's the, for the state building codes.
It would be?
A pretty significant one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, it's not, we're not talking the little magnitude for earthquakes. They're, they're thinking of designing.
Anything useful to know? Are they looking at level six or level seven or level eight?
I, I can definitely, I'm sure that's mandated in the code, and we'll find that information, and we'll, we'll get that back to you. We are designing to the, to the.
State code.
Code standard there, yes. The next one, here's just another view of it. And then, um, can we take, we've had any more diagrams? Yeah, so this is the next one, um, the variance elevation. So this kind of goes back to what Heidi was saying about, um, different people recover in different ways. So, um, the, the dorm side of things have very limited windows to give them lots of dark and quiet, whereas the living quarters side and the gym have a little bit more windows to get that light, uh, more space. We do have a patio on the west end of the building, so, um, if they want outdoor space, they've got that available off the kitchen.
And that's upstairs?
Yes, upstairs, correct. Yeah. Um, and then just a rough project timeline for you all. Um, obviously, this is February, it's our, our planning commission meeting. Um, after the winnow decision, uh, the goal is to then put in the temporary station. Hopefully, in March, we're still working through some things with ODOT and Clean Water Services, so, um, that's, that's the driving factor on that one there. Um, but coming in for our building permit again in late March for the, the main building, we do expect that permit to take a little bit longer. Um, but we left restrictions for us on the temporary station, but we're, we're proud to go through on the main one. So ideally, we're gonna start construction in late spring. That's all dependent on, on permitting, but that's the goal with then construction happening over the next year or so, um, with the goal being that they would be in and operational in, at the end of twenty twenty. Hello, on, uh, Nangle, our general contractor, so.
No, it's impossible. Well, I, having dealt with ODOT and how slow their bureaucrat, bureaucracy is, that's actually something I think that could really slow you down, depending on how soon they get off there.
We're definitely working through that right now, because we're trying to stay on their good side, so we're all leave that one.
Yes.
Trying to think, um, if there's anything else that I want to make sure you guys know about. Um, going back to the seismic side of things, uh, the foundation, we don't have to do piles at this station.
Wow.
The geotechnical engineer has decided we don't have a big risk of liquefaction, so essentially, um, we are using, um, larger footings and some grade beams which kind of tie the footings together. The idea being they're only expecting a couple inches of settlement, so the whole thing should, should kind of have one piece, that little bit of settlement that, um, between the geotechnical engineer and the structural engineer are anticipating.
That really surprises me, since we have liquefaction in King City.
It really all depends on just exactly where you are. We did have the geotech come out before we started any of the design work. They did some boring, they measured water levels, they did soil analysis, so.
I'm very lucky. Anything else? Thank, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, now we're ready for public testimony. Uh, we will have those who are in favor of the application first, then people who are opposed, and then people who are neutral or just want to make a comment. Um, are there any folks that wish to testify in favor of the application? Anybody online? Anyone who wants to testify in opposition to the proposal?
I only have Kelly online, TVCTV.
Oh, okay. He doesn't care. He used to do the, the Tiger Division when I was on the Tiger Council. Uh, okay. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment or has a question about the proposal? Putting online, I, oh, you said just Kelly, okay. Uh, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay.
I motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone, just, I didn't ask if you had any rebuttal, but since there was no testimony, I didn't think you were gonna have any rebuttal. With that. It seems sort of redundant. Okay. Uh, are there any questions for staff or the, further questions for the applicant from the commission? I would entertain a motion, uh, regarding the proposal. Now, um, Max, do we need to, um, do the site plan application separate from the variances? Or can we include the variances within the site application?
You can include the variances in the site application. We, we also ask that you.
Do the tree separately?
Well, you just affirmatively say that the wastewater mitigation can happen after the temporary structure is removed.
All right. Yeah, I, I've got a note about that. Okay. Um, so the motion would be to approve the applications, including the variances that staff has discussed and were elucidated by the applicant, and would include, uh, the allowance of doing the stormwater facility improvements after the occupancy of the new station. That's very. Yes, yes. But, but that's, we're, we're going to delay that normal procedure, because they'll have to take out the temporary facility and then they can do the improvement.
It's phrase, it's condition.
With conditions.
Prove with conditions in the staff report and in the waste.
Okay. There was such a motion from anyone?
I move that we approve with conditions in the staff report and, um, allow the occupancy before the stormwater facility is complete.
Second?
Okay. Any further discussion? That, I would ask for a vote, roll call vote on the application, and then we will do the tree.
Approve.
Blair.
Blair.
Approve.
He doesn't have to do this normally.
Mr. Mitchell.
Approve.
Approve.
Approve. So we have a, it's unanimous?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Now, we need to have a motion regarding the tree removal permit. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve the tree removal permit.
Just seconded.
We need to have a roll call for the tree removal. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Max. Thank you, Athens. I really appreciated you guys coming two weeks ago so we could prepare you for questions that were going to get asked, and it allowed us to have a better idea before the hearing of what was, what was going on. So I really do appreciate the time that you took. Yes, can somebody give me a ballpark of when you think you are gonna be building the new station down in the town center? We're talking five years, ten years, fifteen?
Like we'd be after, so this bond, we have seven more years on. It was not planned in this bond.
Okay. Okay, so closer to ten. And that, yeah, okay. I just, is that, that town center is in theory to be built out within five years. And there will be eleven hundred and eighty-seven living units in the town center. So there'll probably be quite a few calls. And if, is twenty, fifty, fifty to one hundred and twenty-fourth and wallet, would that be the backup station primarily? I was, so I lived on Full Mountain, and I was in the square that was the farthest from any of the other stations until that station was built.
Downtown Tiger Station, five ones is also.
Backup. Well, I just really appreciate when that, that was. And are you still doing, um, ride-alongs for citizens? I would, I would strongly advise anybody on the planning commission to investigate doing a ride-along. I did it while I was on Tiger Council. It was one of the most illuminating, um, events of my life, and I really appreciate. Oh, yes. There was a huge mega accident on Murray, and they had seven trucks, and I was allowed to be inside, and they had to use the, what do you call the things of life to get somebody out of a car that was upside down and squished. Um, and they had two, they didn't have enough ambulances for all people that were injured. It, that was a major event on a hot summer day.
Hi, Chris, do you want to take a break before we do?
Yeah, let's take a break and let you guys.
Just one thing too, just a reminder, this station's being designed with extra dorms. Right, so if this station wasn't built and we used the data to draw decisions, there's options for staffing. For Sherwood Station thirty-three, which is.
Where is that located?
So what is straight class three to thirty-three?
Is it down in, on, in Old Town?
That one is next in line for remodel, and it will be designed the same way with extra dorms. So we, we will have options if the station's not built in that area.
Yeah, well, that's where the new city hall someday will have to be. Because people, they're exploding here. Right, Max? Believe it or not, when I moved out there in nineteen ninety, the city hall part was only one-third of this building. That was how few staff people there were. The rest of it was leased out to other entities. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You have to have a motion for a recess.
A motion for recess?
Yes.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Materials, we got some questions, um, that I think makes sense for us to address. Um, the first one was the process for adding items to the agenda. So that, a lot of times with the planning commission, the, the agenda is driven by state mandated timelines, so we have, only have so much time to process an application. Um, sometimes it's a hundred and twenty days, uh, sometimes it's a hundred and fifty. So that's, that's, that's one way that, um, items get on the agenda. Also, sometimes the city councilor, traditionally, they would delegate things to the planning commission to kind of study or to make recommendations. There are also things from, due to metro or state grants where it's not a decision that's made by the, um, planning commission, but it might be a recommendation to the council. So that's, those are ways that things can get on the agenda. As far as adding things to the agenda that might be of community concern, I think that the best way to do that would be at the end of a meeting. We could add an agenda item that's just like items of community concern, so that if, not that we would discuss them at that meeting, but say, I think there's, might be confusion related to this issue, is this something we want to add to a future agenda? And depending on how long the agendas are and how much capacity you guys have, because we, one of you guys have to meet for like three or four hours. But that's a way that, not on the merits of the, whatever the item is, but if that's something that you think should be added to the, that probably would be the cleanest way of doing it.
So at the end of the regular agenda rather than adding it?
Yeah, just, I, just a, I, I think that this is something that should be put on a future agenda. And you know, if there's kind of consensus that should, might be put on a future agenda, then that way, because what concerns, what's always concerned me the most and really concerns me now, because this is an area of emphasis by the Oregon Government Ethics Commission, who has the ability to find people and punish them. They are placing a extra emphasis on what they would term serial meetings. So that's bodies coming to a decision outside of a, the best way to describe it would be like telephone. So like, um, if Commissioner Mitchell called Commissioner Petrie and was like, hey, I think this is how I'm leaning on this decision, and she was like, yeah, that seems reasonable to me, and then one of them called someone else. And, and eventually, you, you've gotten so that you know how the majority are gonna vote, and it has happened outside of a, so that's always concerned me. But now it's a point of emphasis with the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. So to the extent that, and it, it's different, it's different if you're not saying how you're gonna vote, if you're just saying, I think this should be on an agenda, but given the emphasis the OGE C is placing, I think that the best practice would be to raise it during the public meeting, see if there's consensus for discussion. Not like, I think it's a good idea or a bad idea, but just like, is that something that we might consider taking up when we have time on our schedule? And then we can deal with it like that. Um, yeah.
So here we are, yeah. So I, I would prefer during the agenda to add things, because people are fresh. By the end of the meeting, people want to go home. Um, what we're doing right now was a agenda add. I had a question of, what are some of the procedures? How, how do we do that? How do we get an agenda on the items? How do you submit something for public record? This is great, I appreciate. You know, it's not what I asked for, but it's wonderful that you're doing a tight deal, um, and we agreed to put it on the agenda, and.
Here we go. It's not a, it's not a unity thing, it's not an application, it's not a.
Right, I mean, the, just, and this is.
And, and the only, the only thing is, is it kind of gets to the question, um, are there things we can talk about ourselves in the public and set them up in the public so that we talk about them in the public and. Discuss things so that we can kind of determine, are we only a reactive body, or are we, as the planning commission handbook says, also a proactive body if we have an issue we want to raise? Or are we, as the planning commission handbook says, also a proactive body if we have an issue we want to raise?
Yeah, so I mean, one of the issues that planning commissions have, and this is true of every city that I've ever worked with, that council can kind of dictate the agenda. And so, and then it's balancing, okay, we, we, you guys only have so much time to process things. So how can we efficiently use your time? But I, I agree with your point is that if things are coming up that are issues of community concern, it is better to deal with them on the front end. Because like, there's so much disinformation.
This is true of all jurisdictions.
There's so much disinformation, other stuff that happens that it's really important that, I think that, to demonstrate transparency. And so, you know, it's not my decision to make, but if, whether it's at the start of the meeting or the end, like my very strong preference is it would happen during that meeting of just, hey, I'm hearing people saying this. Is this something that as a group we would put on a, might put on a future agenda? And then, you know, you guys can.
Now, yeah, I remember just, you know, when I learned them, in fourth grade, you know. There was, there was old business, there was new business. Can it be added to the script, a, a question, just, is there, you know, any business we want to?
Add to the business agenda?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it just, well, because of public notice requirements, we just need to make sure that the public's aware that this is going to be on the agenda. So adding something to the current meeting is really difficult.
So we, should we put this on the agenda for the next meeting?
If you, if you, I mean, right now, we're just, the question is, how, how could this happen? And so I'm just providing you guys with factual information of how, how you could, how something could happen in the future. If you guys decided you wanted to do it and, and had the capacity to do it. And just for, from a best practice, it would be, they would, the best practice would be to raise them at the public meeting. Consensus not about the outcome, but whether it's something that merits discussion. And then staff could help you put it on the agenda if, looking at, looking at the rest of the agenda items. Because it, like, like last meeting, by the time we got to the training, I mean, you guys had already processed so much and so had I.
We already processed the information. It's like hard to keep track.
Peter, let me see if I can clarify what I think I just heard. So if we come up with an item that we want to discuss and know if we have consensus, we can do that in a meeting without it being on the agenda. But in order to move forward, we should put it on the agenda and make it during a pre-announced agenda item in public in case people want to comment on it.
Just so, like, you could have a, you could have an agenda item just somewhere in the ordinary course that said, potential, potential interest of community concern. And then you could, you know, if, if people are saying this is going to happen or that's going to happen, just be like, hey, it seems like there are a lot of people that might be concerned about this, this issue. Like, let's say it's light rail, which you have a special charter provision dealing with light rail. But let's say like, you're aware that Metro or whomever is looking at light rail on the west side. Is this something we would want to put on the agenda? And maybe that's, that signals the staff to get some information from Metro, or maybe it signals the staff. But then you could, at that meeting where you raise it as an issue of community concern, just say, is that something folks will be interested in putting on a future agenda?
Yeah, that's what, we, we can discuss it, get consensus to put it on for public at the next meeting.
Yeah.
It doesn't prevent us from discussing it without it being on the agenda.
Yeah, just not discussing towards the decision.
Right, okay.
Right, not, not saying we absolutely don't want light rail here in King City. That's what you want to avoid. It's just like, you know, I think there's been a lot in the media about light rail and, and a west side connection. Is that something that seems like there might be community interest? Is that something that you think might, we might throw on a future agenda?
Okay, right.
Yeah, simple like that, yeah.
In the council's, sorry, commission's best interest, if I draw up a procedures and.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we need to complicate it. I mean, I think that sometimes you can see these issues of community concern, you know, bearing down on you like a freight train. And this is true in every jurisdiction I've ever represented. And my experience has been it's better to get out in front of them. And the problem with all of our public noticing requirements and the problem with our public meeting laws is that it can make this incredibly inefficient to do. And so having like a catch-all so that people could say, hey, I'm hearing a lot about this. What is their interest in, in having staff gather some information and then potentially putting this on a future agenda? I think that's well within our bounds of what you can do safely. Where you have to be careful is if it's like, yeah, I'm hearing everyone's opposed to that. Like then, then it suddenly seems like you're debating towards an issue. Well, that debate needs to happen on the agenda, on the agenda where it's been noticed. So be, be a little bit careful in how you do it and just say, you know, it seems like there's a lot of confusion or concern about this item. Should we place it on an agenda? And I think that's probably the safest way to do it. Yeah, that's totally true, which makes it.
But then at least it gets us on.
And then you're demonstrating to the public that you're being transparent and that decisions aren't being made outside of the meeting because you're being, when you, when stuff gets far off back like five times, on one hand, it's kind of annoying. And on the other hand, like, the public really gets to see the sausage-making process, so, you know. Sometimes it's not, yeah. So. Okay, there are a couple more of these questions.
They're all my questions.
Okay, what's the priority?
Yeah, there's, there's two that I absolutely want to get to.
Okay.
Okay, number, number three. So.
Last couple of months, we've received emails that have been sent to.
Yeah.
So now we're kind of in a public meeting concept where all getting the same things. Emails are brought up at a meeting and I've had.
Be concerned, hey, what are you guys talking about? You're talking about this email you got. What's it, what's it saying? I can't see it, dah dah dah.
So I think the safest.
My question is, how do we submit a document or email to the public record so that it's easily obtainable? To ensure that reports, records and other.
Non-confidential information, which is or will be available to the decision makers, is made available to the public in a convenient format and sufficiently in advance of any decision. So how, how do we do that? And I'm going to guess.
Yes, you're definitely right.
Forward email to you. You can include it in a PDF. First thing I want to say is, do not reply all.
Never, never do.
I don't reply, I don't reply to other councils.
I think.
Yep.
However, if somebody already sent something to you, it's already public record. They can say, say you say something in the. Public meeting here, I have this record, this email received on such and such a date and time. Now that person can go and do a public records request and get that from me.
Okay, so now I'm talking to the commission.
So I would, let me, hey, Ronnie, if you, if you just let me handle this. If you forward it to Ronnie and say, this looks like public testimony that should be in the public record, then he can enter it into the record. If you do not hit reply all, but if you reply back to the person and say, this is the sort of testimony that you should submit to city staff so it can be included in the record. Then when, during ex parte contact, you can say, I got a email on this topic from whomever at this date and time. I forwarded it to the city reporter. My, my only response to the person that sent it to me was that this appeared to be public testimony and that public testimony should be submitted to the city. And then just say, I didn't discuss the merits of that public comment or anything else like that. And I think that my whole thing is disclosure. I mean, you saw that from me this evening. Because what I never would want is to not say, well, you know, 14 years ago, I did some legal work at TVFNR. And then have somebody say, I saw a newspaper article and you were quoted as representing TVFNR and you didn't disclose it. And that is true of, I used to do private side, some private side developer work before the Great Recession. I mean, back in like six, seven. If any of, none of the people that were with like D R Horton are there anymore. But if I ever have an application from D R Horton that comes in, I say, I performed work. I haven't performed work since 2007. I do not know any of these people personally. Because I've, until the, there are always outlier cities, but until the pandemic, generally, people assumed good faith. And since the pandemic, like, people have not necessarily assumed good faith. So like, in another jurisdiction, there was an applicant developer, I had never been heard of him before and I didn't know who their lawyer was. I may have met their lawyer. He's a Schwab. If I did, I don't recall it. And the next thing I knew, there were people saying, we heard you're best friends with his attorney. We heard that you, like, do work for the developer. And literally, I had never heard of the developer previously. And if I had ever met the attorney, and I might have, but if I ever met him, I could, didn't, I don't think I had. And so it's just like, you just got to err on the side of, of, err on the side of transparency. Because people don't, people don't, you know, they, it is not just here. I mean, it's definitely here, but it's, it's, in every city I represented since the pandemic, there's kind of been this change in, are there secret meetings going on? Like, you're not being transparent, like, who's paying you, those sort of things. And, and it can, those things can sow community concerns. And so I just think big disclosure on the front end is critically important, yeah.
So final, final answer, we submitted to you, it's a matter of public records. Someone can do a public records request. There is not an easier way for them to access it than a public records.
Well, if it's part of the, if it's part of the record in the proceeding and we have a packet that shows, these are the public comments we've received, like, that public comment would be part of that.
In the packet.
But I think, so what about general email and probably Mr. Blair saying, you should have done this at this meeting? No, no, this is all issue-related stuff.
This would be before, before the decision. If, if someone writes to send a nasty note saying, I can't believe you did this, or I can't believe you that, did that after the hearing, it's not going to be part of the record because it's not coming back to you. Now, if for some reason it got remanded to you by the counselor at Luba, then at that point, you'd say, after we made the decision, I got this email. Here it is.
This came to all of us. So are we all individually to respond to this person? Tell them that we're, so how do we know if anybody's going to do it?
Well, if, if you forward it to Ronnie, then I would argue that it should be in the packet because it's been, they might, some people don't know how to submit a public, I mean, they don't know how to submit a public.
That's, that's, that's answer one that I'm looking for.
Yeah.
If I forward it to you before the meeting, it'll be in the packet.
Thank you.
Seven days before the packet.
Right.
So, um, take, remember the T S Ps, how we did the T S Ps? It had, we had like 600 or 6, I don't know how many pages.
More than 600.
Yeah, 600 pages of the comments. A lot of those were emails to the commissioners.
Yeah.
They forwarded to me.
Right.
I wrote it down and I put it into the record.
Right.
So just, just like that.
This was the day of the meeting.
So that's.
This was the day of the meeting. This was the day of the meeting.
So be like, I received, I, I, was it on the merits of the decision?
Well, it was on discussing.
Oh.
The converse, what we were going to be discussing, basically.
Yeah, so I think just the disclosure, the disclosure that you received it, that that's ex parte contact, that you forwarded it to the city, that it is not in the packet in front of the public because it was received like two hours before the thing.
Could it be read at the meeting?
No, we, we don't normally read.
I mean, you might put it, I, I don't.
That would get, that would get it into the record. If you, if you receive a letter.
Well, even if it, if it doesn't, there's, there are a couple of dates. There's stuff that we ask people to submit in writing with enough time so that we can get it out and put it in the packet. But that doesn't mean that we wouldn't, that doesn't mean that something's not in the record. It's just like, there's a cutoff time where we're trying to be transparent and we're trying to get it in front of the public. And then if the person wants to, I mean, if, if someone could file a Luba appeal based on that and say, well, it got sent to the city reporter and I raised this argument. It's just like, maybe we just need to do some public education about, hey, this is how you put something into the record. We would really appreciate it if you don't send this ex parte to people because you could get them in trouble with the O G C. So, and again, I think some people just don't know how to submit something into the record, so.
Just going to say.
Yeah.
You have to read every single one.
Because they're in the public record. You would give that to me and then on the final product, there's a final, the notice of decision, whatever it might be, that notice would go into that package.
If we receive an email, can we respond to the sender?
Other than, other than, other than saying, you know, please submit this to the city staff so it can be included in the record. If you say anything other than that, it can, that can create the serial meeting problem. Because let's say all of you like, said it's something like, I understand your points. I think you made some good ones. Something like that. If, if four people sent that, then suddenly you have a public meetings violation because you're commenting on the merits of the testimony outside of the public meeting, which is what you don't want to do.
Even though we're not talking to each other. Huh, interesting.
Yeah, because the way that, so the, the people to blame for all this is Lane County. They had, they were engaging in these things and they booked it on their calendars as book club. And then they essentially, like, one was going to one and the other one's going to the other. And then public started noticing that these meetings were going real quick, you know, like, they seemed to be really plowing through stuff. And it's like, well then, and it's like, if they weren't trying to hide anything, why would they market it as book club on their calendar? And it was like consistently, like at a consistent time. And so when a judge gets that, it just looks nefarious. So that the, the law on this isn't great.
So our, our information set meetings.
Yeah.
That are just workshops, workshops. The public are, public is invited to them so they can sit in and.
Watch.
Good, all right.
Yeah. Yeah, Paula, I promised my wife I'd do some stuff tonight, so I have to get going.
Right, I understand.
The thing that got me, one of them was from the head of public. He knows better.
Yeah, I.
I know he knows better.
I've had lawyers do it. I mean, I.
It's totally inappropriate.
Okay, back, back to my question about responding to a letter. Now, we get a letter. I've had comments from people saying, you never tell me, you didn't acknowledge. And so I feel like an obligation. If I get an email from somebody about a subject, I should at least say, thank you. I received it and that's, basically, I'm here and I shouldn't say I agree or disagree. But I should, I feel like I should respond.
Yeah, I think you can say, I received your comment and forwarded it to city staff.
Because we don't, because people feel like we're ignoring them. If we don't respond to the, if we get an email, we, I think we all are obligated to say, thank you. You're saying no.
I disagree. It's totally inappropriate. I, I delete them immediately. I know it was, I told Ronnie and then I deleted because it's not.
But then the public feels like they're being ignored.
Well, I mean, you can, and, and as, as his attorney said, you can say.
Thank you very much.
I have received your email. I am forwarding it to city staff.
Yeah, it just, just be really careful not to comment on the merits of it.
Right.
Yeah.
Got it.
I think that's just.
It's being forwarded.
I get lots of responses that I'm the only one that, I, I respond, thank you for your email.
Received your email, I forwarded to city staff, love you.
I have to be careful as an attorney. That's kind of what.
Oh, Ronnie, I am going to forward you five emails. And I'm gonna let you guys know what they are.
Oh, that's great.
Huh?
So, so, so this is, this is really the, this is really the problem, is that people will send emails to some members of the commission, but they won't send it to others.
All of these were copied, copied.
Oh, I only got two.
Because you can see who it goes to.
Oh, I only got two, so.
My thinking city system would use.
I had two, I had two. No, 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 this is last meeting.
So, letter, letter from Jessica Brayman, ten oh nine, or one, one oh nine, twenty twenty four.
No, no, I didn't get that, no.
Uh, letter from Gary Woods, Land Use Committee.
Yeah, I think I got that one.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I, I was talking about recent, you're talking about long time.
I'm, I'm going back.
Oh, okay, yeah.
A couple.
I didn't go back, no, I didn't.
Yeah.
No, it's one nine twenty five or twenty four?
Yeah.
I've got ten nine twenty four, but that doesn't make sense to me. That would be more like.
Yeah.
One nine twenty four.
Right, no, I mean, those are, they.
Yeah, decisions have been made, I mean, this is just, put it in the public record.
This is emails, this is, these are, the, the most important ones to make sure to get to the city are emails that are sent about a decision that you're going to make prior to the decision. Right, if you.
Talked about them at the meeting.
Okay.
Uh, letter, letter from Janet Black, dated January five.
Yeah.
Uh, letter from Talton River Keepers, one twenty one, uh, input on the Sherlin Woods application.
Yeah.
Letter from Mike Meyer, two eleven, input on continuing erosion issues.
Yeah.
Uh, letter from Glenn P., Talton River Keeper.
Okay.
Should be on the record too.
Pardon?
Mike Meyer, it should be on the record.
Yeah, that was in the record.
I've got him.
That, okay.
And also keep in mind too, your emails, if you delete them, I still have them.
Okay.
Like, they're in my server.
Right.
Okay.
They're still there. But I needed to go in and look for Gary Mitchell saying something about the commissioner, I can go in and search it. I'm not, you didn't have to.
I can, I can, I can forward them, make it, make it easy for you, you'll have a packet.
Because my, because our emails, our email system is like set up, it automatically indexes that.
Okay, alright, do we, do we wanna get back to the?
Yes.
Yeah, I got one, one more that's a priority.
Okay. Alright, let's try and make it really, let's try and make it, okay. What is it?
Yes. So, my question is, did, did everyone receive the Janet Black email?
Well, what did it discuss?
Was it, yeah, I don't remember.
Um.
I did not get the Janet, yeah.
Pardon?
I did not get Janet.
How long ago was it?
Yeah, one month.
It was before we made the decision, two weeks ago, a month, no, a month ago.
Dated January five.
So it was the, it was the hearing we had in.
I don't remember.
At the end of January.
In my head.
No, I saw it.
Who else?
Oh, yeah, no, I saw this and I thought.
I, I saw it later, but I did not get the email.
Okay, you, you were on the list, huh?
No.
Right.
There's things I don't get, and so.
So, and, does someone else want one?
I haven't seen it, but I don't know that I need to see it, what's, what's the, what is it, what's the issue?
So, um, my issue is, as, as public disclosure, Janet Black is my wife.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Holy moly?
Okay, that, that kind of changes the context, thank you for telling us that.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I knew.
Full, full, full disclosure.
I thought she just really likes you, and she's fine with it.
There's, there's a ton of stuff. My question is.
Yeah.
How do we discuss items that were learned after a meeting, or, what's our procedure to establish the expectation for the planning commission, that we always receive accurate, complete, unbiased information? And, kind of, summing up what she said, and what I've experienced, that does an awesome job. You guys, you guys do great. Um, almost, almost all the time, we receive accurate, complete, and unbiased information. And I can, I can run you through our climate-friendly and equitable communities. I, I have not found anything to disagree with what was presented to us. Fire station, um, town center, it's an enormous project, uh, Sherlin Woods, you know, I can, I can go on and on.
Yeah.
That's a remarkable, good job. Every once in a while, um, and I'm using the Westside Trail as an example, I'm, I'm chasing after that, hunting down information that we didn't get, that we got that was inaccurate, those, on and on. Uh, very mail, notices that in the October meeting, uh, we were told approving the concept plan was important for the RFFA grant. I asked for a copy of the grant application from you, you gave it to me.
Not me, definitely, okay.
Yeah.
But it's like, I don't.
It was all about roads and trails, not about park amenities. Uh, I brought that up in the December meeting, and it immediately switched over to the requirements of the Metro grant. Uh, Janet went to Metro, got a copy of the Metro grant, I went through it, I'm not an expert, but at that, at that meeting, we were told, and, first of all, I am not, I acknowledge and accept the decisions that were made there, I am not trying to relitigate anything, I'm just saying, as a commissioner, to do my job, I have to have accurate information. Um, we were told that December thirty first was the deadline, that it was a grant deadline, commitments had been made. Um, the only thing I can find in the application is that on June and December thirtieth and thirty first, we're required to give a quote, brief progress report, that's it. Uh, the deadline for the grant is June of twenty twenty seven. Um, you asked, if we don't meet our December thirty first deadline, do we have to refund money? And the answer was, that's a million dollar question, talk about grants, stuff, we can always go back to Metro and ask for a, an extension. The correct answer would have been, no, there's no connection. Um.
Complete information.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think something like, using that as an example, and I have not recently reviewed all of it, but. Before you get into it, Peter, can I just clarify?
Yes, please.
Because I went back and reread those minutes, or rewatched the minutes. So, Mike conflated, there's three Metro grants. There's the RFA grant, which was one that we applied for last month. There was the Metro twenty eight, twenty two grant, which was the funding that funded the concept plan, which is the one that you're talking about, and you're right, the deadline for that grant's at twen- two thousand and twenty seven. But then there was the two thousand and eighteen Metro UGB grant, so when Mike was saying that there was a deadline for the end of the month, he was, he was wrong, he was thinking about that Metro UGB grant, which did have a deadline, and we did have to end up asking, that was the one for the LWY.
And I make no accusations of various.
We weren't trying to be intentionally misleading, but I do understand that it may or may not have impacted someone's decision to vote, because there was.
It may or may not.
Disinformation.
And I, I am not. It made it feel like it was an, some urgency that we had to get done in order.
I do still feel it was urgent to, to, to get that in with the RFA grant, regardless of whether or not it had park amenities, because we, I did tell them, and I was able to communicate that we're.
Because we told the RFA grant that we had approved it.
Yeah, that's what I was going for.
Right.
Yeah, so I think part of the, part, part of the problem with this is like, this, this whole, um, Westside Trail project dates back to twenty fourteen. So like, in, in, well, but, but, in twenty fourteen, Metro and the city like ratified the thing, and it just, I mean, I have the same problem myself, yeah.
This isn't about the Westside Trail.
Okay.
It's about complete, accurate, unbiased information, this is, the Westside Trail is simply an example, so.
So what should have happened is.
I'll have to check the date.
There's three different grants, this one.
Yeah, or we have a bunch of grants with Metro, we have a bunch of grants with Metro, I would have to check and see what the specific timeline is, would have been ideal.
So, complete, complete information.
I think the best practice going forward, and I talked to Max about this too, my hand mic, is instead of coming off our heads with a date, because sometimes we have, we have a lot of stuff up here going on, uh, we need a staff report. But, so the deadline is there, you guys. See, af- after this was brought up, yeah, I think that's great, that's great.
Yeah, I think that's how we can address it moving forward, to make sure this doesn't happen. So really, I emphasized, I, I, I've said it every single time, and I have yet to really get much action from the commission, but I tell you guys, ask me questions beforehand, so I can write them in the staff report, specifically to what you wanna know more about.
And here we go, it's complete information.
Correct.
Yeah.
After it's complete, unbiased, okay? So, I didn't know all the right questions to ask, and, you know, I, I, I did a lot of research, I didn't, I didn't do enough. Um. It was all this, just a concept plan, it can be changed later, I didn't ask how. Uh, that's a critical question, because when it was sold, when it presented to the commissioners, was presented as, because Janet had already brought this up. Uh, here's, here's our, we need, we need this approved by the, by the commission, so that when grants become available, we'll have an approved concept plan, we can get grants, to get money to build stuff. Um, what that means is, that, that, you know, if that's size to us, it's just a concept plan that can be defined further, as emphasized to missions, or the, I get counselors, to the counselors, that, uh, this was for grants, which locks things in, so, there, there are two good reasons, they can both be true.
So. So practically speaking, in Oregon, we do a concept plan, and then that concept plan, which does allow us to get future grant funds, or like, a comprehensive plan, or a Parks Master Plan, or a transportation system plan, and that concept plan of, is used to inform, like, if you look at our concept plan for the urban growth management area, that informed the questions that were asked and decisions that were made in the TSP and in the comprehensive plan, which both had to be adopted, but that's, like, the concept plan is, I'm just gonna say, like, forty percent of, not forty percent, but like, we, we, Metro has told us, this is the number of units per acre, whole area wide we need to do, I mean, it informs the next questions that go into the comprehensive plan and transportation system plan.
That's the question.
Yeah.
Concept plan that can be resolved.
My question, how does that happen? What's the procedure?
So for su- for something like.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue, it's okay, it's just.
Well, an example, second example, being, uh, our master plan requires us, and we just had this at our workshop with the clean water stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Is, the master plan requires us to mitigate existing erosion problems created by prior development. Um, development in that area is upcoming, make close opportunities, we never discussed our lost opportunity to mitigate. We discussed pickleball courts and, and community goals.
Lost opportunity.
We never discussed our water detention.
For the erosion?
Yep.
Well, we don't, so, we don't, we don't actually own any of this land.
I pointed that out.
Right, like, we don't own any of this land, any of this stuff, we could get money for a grant, potentially, in order to build all or a part of it, because there might be some willing property owners, so a section of it might end up getting developed, the application for that area might come in front of us. Right now, the homeowners association that owns a lot of that area, has said that they have no interest in negotiating for either the sale of it, or for the, um, right old way. So like, I know that this, I know that this is something that was a community priority when we were doing all of the initial, people were like, oh, I want bike connectivity, or want this, that, absent control over the dirt, we can't do anything.
But, we, we, as we were approving a concept plan, should have talked about stormwater management.
There is stormwater in that.
No, we did, there, we did.
Are you specifically talking about the erosion at the park?
Mm-hmm, no, at the park and at the grid and.
We talked about that, but we got just for, for.
Well, at the park, we, we have control at the park, so that's something where we could actually do something. But the park and the Westside Trail are, you can't just, you can't train the hydrology to go into the trail, yeah. So I'm just saying that, that like, that, what could be in a future theoretical park, you know, I, I've, I've watched the plan, and, and, and my recommendation in jurisdictions now is, instead of saying basketball court, or soccer field, or whatever, they say like, athletic amenity.
Well, and once again, I'm, I'm just gonna keep redirecting that I'm not talking about the Westside Trail project, I'm talking about a, receiving accurate, complete, unbiased destination.
Right, and I.
But, hey.
Yes.
We have, nobody is gonna be perfect, it's going to happen. Mike should have given and told Max to go, there's three different grants, dot, dot, dot. I knew about two of them, actually, I did know about all three, and one did have a deadline in December. So, I understand your concern, but nobody is ever gonna be perfect, we are never gonna get perfect information, we get the best that the staff can provide us, and that's all we can demand, we want the best, but it's never going to be perfect.
Yep, and, every, I only speak for myself.
No, I, but I need to, but, you know, we are volunteers, we have a very small staff, Max worked his behind off, and the city manager worked his behind off, and Ra- anyway, the point, the point I'm raising is, I, I hear you, Ronnie, is, they're doing the best that they can.
And this is a purely theoretical project.
For, for myself.
I have the expectation for myself, as a planning commissioner, to always work with fully accurate, complete, unbiased information, I will hopefully be asking questions to support that, that I just want it out there, that that's my expectation for myself.
And I expect it too, but I also do a lot of research outside.
You do?
I.
Well, we're all human, and we're all fallible, and at some point, we're all going to misspeak.
And we can't have complete if we don't know the earth.
And if you really think that, in a specific instance, that you're being given wrong information, or you just don't agree with it, and you can ar- you can make your argument on the commission, to try to get people to side with you, you're like, I really, Mike's blowing water, I don't think the staff is accurate in this, this is why I'm gonna vote against it, or vice versa. Because the whole point, the whole entire point of it, was we were trying to, we were asking the commission to vote. We didn't wanna kick it down the can, we'd already done it once, we needed a vote one way or another.
And basically, what we were, when we're voting on a concept, we're just saying, shoot up there.
It's kind of just indicating that the city is moving on something and, and showing it. Or could move on something. Right, but now it's like, for the stormwater, for example, if we wanna get a grant with Clean Water Services and look at shoring up one hundred thirty seven, I can show them the, the Westside Trail concepts, and I can say, hey, we've got this channel, we're trying to incorporate it. And we contract with Clean Water Services to do all that work and all of our inspections for us. So like, King City is unique, some, some cities do it themselves, but we say, you're the experts, we're not, um, what are our opportunities to do it? And then they, you know, you heard them last meeting, they're experts in ways about it, in ways that we, I mean, I'm not an engineer. And one thing Clean Water Services doesn't do, and they're pretty adamant about it, is aesthetics, so.
I noticed.
If we want to, if we want to enhance that corridor, they could do the stormwater management convey.
management conveyance system, but then we could have another public meeting, or we could ask people to come in and be like, what are your opinions?
You know, we don't even, we don't even know whether that, it's possible that that neighborhood would never sell to us, it's possible that they would say, we'll give you right away, wide enough for a bike path and nothing else, um, you know, I, it's, it's strange, up until about four years ago, I got, I mean, like, four years ago, I got a call from the Duncampu City Manager, and she's like, I think we have a problem, and I was like, with what? And she's like, with this park. And I, I remember I was heading into Yamhill County, and I laughed, and was like, come on Alex, I've never had a problem with a park, and like, was just, and like, sixty days later, I mean, I was like, oh man, you were right, we have a major problem with this park. And since then, in every park that I've dealt with, uh, with the exception of Estacada's waterfront park, um, people, like, parks have become incredibly controversial, and so like, I, you know, the demonstrating community's support to potentially get grant dollars, that is important, and like, the amount of outreach that, but again, like, with that one in particular, we don't own the dirt, and, in fact, and they're like, their lawyers, like, I'm not interested in negotiating.
That's not what I'm talking, you know.
Right, so what I'm saying is like, to, it sounds like-
I, I think I've got my answer.
Yeah, okay, good, let's, because I have to get home too.
Well, for me personally, just, these are my expectations.
Okay. Right, and we're also human beings, and we've been working on this thing since at least twenty seventeen, and sometimes it gets modeled in my mind too.
Yeah, I, I'll do one, one-
I don't have to deal with any of the others.
One final comment on this issue, and I'll shut up.
Excellent.
When we did the concept plan, when I was on the council, back in-
Twenty eighteen.
Was it twenty eighteen?
I think.
Uh, I think it was tw- well, in-
It's twenty seventeen, eighteen.
Yeah, okay.
You said it in twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
The biggest thing we heard about was, we want a park along that trail, and that, that was the most often discussed item.
During the charrettes, yeah, that was number one.
Yeah, and to have this one hundred and eighty degree turnaround, and also, we're not interested in the park, is mind blowing to me, I, I am in shock.
But if that's the, that's the thing, is that, the vision and values of every city are different, the vision and values of every city council are different, if you read the application that the council at that point submitted to Metro, and you compare it to comments that we get in public meetings now, you can't, I mean, I, it's like a whiplash, I mean, it's like, well, how did this, what ha- what happened here, but it happened, you know?
It's just like, you said, he's gotta get in on the beginning, because people hadn't already found their uses for that area, and now you've threatened to take them away by making it a park.
Yeah, where are they gonna throw their pumpkins at?
Yeah, you're actually, and have their, so, you know, like, I'm, I'm gonna have to pick it up, you know, um, and, and so, yeah, I think that it's, what people are concerned about is change, you know?
Change is hard.
Yeah, change is hard, and change, you know, in my neighborhood, change behind my expense, and change, you know?
And in fact, a park will increase the value.
Right, it increases the values of, of the homes around it, yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and also, it might, it might never happen, so, um-
Yeah, I first heard about it when I graduated in two thousand seven. There was this guy who was so excited about, he was working for Metro, and we're gonna do this park in-
Yeah.
Thank you for-
I don't need any more.
All right.
Dean, I was saying, thank you for bringing up your concerns, I think you made some valid points, and I think we all need to be aware of it.
Yeah, I think in like, like, let's get a couple of systems in place, so we can address some of these things down the road, but let's now get back to the, I've been up for a long time, um, quasi judicial hearings, so there's notice requirements, staff typically provides a script to open the hearing, and which meets other requirements, so that, you heard it tonight, when she said that i- in order to appeal on a, a certain issue, you have to raise it, it's called waive it or raise it, uh, raise it or waive it, it identifies the criteria, we had a court of appeals case on this very issue, we had a opponent who said that it violated goal five, as I said to the court of appeals, look at everything in goal five, simply saying we violate goal five isn't sufficiently narrowed down to allow us to either point to where in the record we have addressed it, or to continue the hearing in order to bring in data, in order to address it, or to explain, you know, how we're not required to address it under state law or, or the Metro Code, um, and they, they agreed with us, we won that case, so, um, you know, raise it or waive it, it needs to be, it needs to be raised with sufficient clarity to, um, to allow the decision makers to, uh, create a record, to answer that, those concerns, point to where in the evidence it's dealt with, or what have you, um-
You notice I made the statement twice.
Yeah, you did, you did a very good job at that, um, because it's important that the public know how to engage in the process. So at the initial evidentiary hearing, anyone can ask for time to present additional argument or evidence, record must be held open or continuance granted, um, we have to be really cognizant of the clock, whenever that happens, I ask the applicant, will you agree to hold the clock, so that we don't come against the hundred and twenty day rule, because if, if we hit a hundred and twenty days and we haven't made a decision, that operates for the applicant's benefit, not us, and that means they get project approval, um, so sometimes, that's why we try and get things in earlier if we can, and we try and manage the schedule. Um, the applicant gets seven days after the record closes to submit final written argument, applicant can waive the seven day period, again, we ask the applicant to extend the clock, I've only had them not extend it one time, and, uh, we had to hold some special hearings around Christmas, and that made everyone super grouchy, but, um, we got through it, um, okay, next. Uh, so the presiding officer has inherent authority to maintain order and decorum, reasonable rules for conduct of meeting, order and like the public testimony, uh, may be specified by ordinance or other rules.
Of course you-
Yeah.
The municipal code says that the council operates under the Roberts Rules of Order, does the commission also then, I didn't find it anyplace where it says we operate, at least I couldn't find it, under Roberts Rules of Order, I assume we do.
And under Oregon land use laws, because there are areas where Oregon land use laws make, require you to do certain things that would not be required under Roberts Rules of Order.
I was just, oh, I was just looking for that word, wording, I saw it at the council level.
Yeah.
I didn't see it at the planning commission.
The states have requirement that every county, or every entity have a planning commission, and so there's some state rules.
Yeah, it's, it's, so that the state, the state to the extent as possible wants uniform rules, and which is interesting, because cities want the exact opposite of that, but there's certain things where we're required to do it the state's way, and that includes public notice, that includes any of those timelines, um, that includes that all those timelines are for the benefit of the applicant, not in, for the city, and, um, if we don't follow those rules, it's a easy remand, that's a, gonna be an automatic remand, and they're gonna make us follow those rules, Luba is, um, or, um, LCDC.
Okay, my question was really just about Roberts Rules of Order, but thank you.
Yeah, it's really a hybrid between Roberts Rules of Orders and the, and the state land use rules. Um, so disturbances, which we hate, but they happen, uh, best practice to provide a warning, if behavior continues, ask them to leave, um, the meeting, if they will not leave, they can be removed from, and this is key, that meeting, they cannot be trespassed from future meetings, that's something that Judge Simon, the federal judge in Portland, has, uh, ruled on, uh, four years ago, um, and then quite recently, and you can get some real sanctions if you try and prospectively trespass someone from your meetings. The other things in order, in addition to verbal statements, if someone has a poster that's blocking the ability of others, if they're shouting down other speakers, which I had happen last year, uh, which was wild, um, then, uh, yeah, um, we asked him to stop, he wouldn't stop, the police were the applicant, the police were the applicant, so I'm like, are we gonna have the applicant on this, remove the guy who's screaming, I object, I object, and I ended up not doing it, but, um, yeah, that was interesting. Um, so, so, and pro tip, call, call a recess, and, and just, you know, take the person aside and say, hey, I'm just, we're just the, I'm just the chair of the planning commission, we're just trying to get through this meeting, like, could you help us out, we're all volunteers. All right, appeals, um, or no, criteria and findings, I gotta have myself, um, approval or denial must be based on standards and criteria adopted by ordinance, uh, finding a decision must be accompanied by a statement of fact explaining the relevant criteria, facts relied upon, justification for the decision based on the criteria, for quasi judicial, the findings are incredibly important, like, incredibly important. For a legislative decision, and I found this one out the hard way, because I have been paying incredibly close attention to the record, and not close attention to the findings, and the planner had not been updating the findings, and I had to go to Luba to argue that the findings didn't matter, as long as there was evidence in the record that could be relied upon for the legislative decision, and we won, and it was like having, being in a fight and having one hand tied behind your back, so, findings, Max does a great job, are incredibly important, um, particularly with the quasi judicial, decision must be based on substantial evidence in the record, and resolve conflicts in the evidence we discussed that last time, if you have competing experts, being like, this, this engineer's been practicing for thirty years, their degrees in hydrology, they've been doing projects like this across the state, versus this is a civil engineer that doesn't normally work with water, so I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna accept the testimony of this person I find it far more compelling, it can be as easy as that. Local appeals applications generally divided into categories in the code, type one, type two, et cetera, which will define the initial decision maker, appeals can be de novo, which means a completely new hearing, um, completely new evidence, or can be on the record, so no new evidence, decision based on the record from the initial decision maker, also can be a hybrid of, we're gonna make this on the record, but we feel to make an informed decision, we need to flesh out this one area, so we will allow submissions on this one issue, that can happen as well, you in King City have a special thing, where if someone's like, they made an error, or like, if state law changed and we weren't aware of it, and they're like, you made a mistake, then they can ask the planning commission for reconsideration, and it can come back, so that you can correct it based off that new information, the reason for that, again, was like, if there was a state law change, um, or something like that that people hadn't been aware of, it's supposed to be expedited, we've only used it once. Um, further appeals, Luba, been going to a lot recently, then Oregon Court of Appeals, only once, um, remand, so be mindful that appeals may result in remand, which we have not had thus far, um, though there, that's the most common outcome at Luba is a remand.
But don't they go, just go to the council?
Yeah, they would usually just go back to the council unless the council remanded it back to you. Um, the, um, be mindful that appeals may result in remand, so you may be making a new decision on the same application again in the future, and, so like, making statements like, well, we really got that wrong, or something like that, if it's gonna get remanded back to you, like, that can trigger a bias, uh, charge. All right, thanks.
And their final twenty-one days?
Yep, it's-
After-
Twenty-one days after the hearing, if there's no appeal, they need to provide notice of appeal within that twenty-one day hearing, that then starts to clock for us to prepare the record, um, they can request mediation, we could or to have to grant it, Luba can order it, they almost never do, um, putting together these records can take a lot of staff time, so if we think something might get appealed, we try and put in the record as it goes, and try and prepare the, um, the summary of like, page one through five is this, page six through twenty-five is that, and that can save a lot of time on the Luba appeal. Um, so, hundred and twenty day rule, uh, final decision, including all local appeals, must be made within a hundred and twenty days after the application is deemed complete. Uh, failure to meet the deadline requires the city to refund at least fifty percent of the fees deposits, um, and allows the applicant to file a writ, and it should be writ, not write, that's my error, of Van Damas in Circuit Court, where the application will be approved unless the city can show approval would violate the code, I've never had to do that before, uh, but you never know, um, the hundred and twenty day rule can be extended in writing, that's critically important, it has to be in writing, not verbal, up to two hundred forty-five days, so, you add that up, that's three sixty-five, if it's not done in three sixty-five, it goes, um, we, we would, I would, was, we're entering three sixty-five, if they haven't given us the information that we need, and they're, um, you know, we would probably have a hearing and, and then reject it, um, we cannot extend past the year, and, uh, again, pro tip, have a blank extension form at all meetings, I make them say it on the record, um, and then state, affirmatively state that they will agree to it in writing, um, and then that makes everyone-
How often have you seen that thing happen? I only had it happen once with a-
Where they refuse to extend, I've had it happen once, and, I, I mean, frankly, like, i- it is, it's, it usually, if, if, if we have to jam three meetings in, in the next week, which I've had to do before, the, the decision making body's not very happy about that, generally, and if you're doing it because that's the only way you can meet this rule and they won't extend it, like, I, you know, your job's to objectively, to, um, you know, process it, and my job's to objectively process it, but the person's not engendering any goodwill, if they're jamming all those meetings into such a limited amount of time, and it's usually, in everyone's best interest to take a deep breath, and to be able to thoughtfully put in the evidence that you need to have in the record, whether it's one way or another, versus trying to rush things in, I mean, it's just always better if you have time to think, yeah. Yeah, they still have to, they still have to, all right, fixed goal, goalpost rule, personal favorite until it's not, um, which is that, they are allowed, the decision must be based on the standards and criteria applicable at the time the application was first submitted, I don't know if it's because of this case, but Peace Health in Eugene had a plan in order to expand their hospital in the downtown that would require cutting out of a lot of trees, the city council said, no, we don't want you to cut down those trees, they had a alternative location near Marist High School, it, they put in an application to build their hospital on that alternative location, um, City of Eugene changed the zoning on that location, so it no longer could be built on that location, because City of Eugene wanted it downtown, even though they also didn't want them to cut down any trees, and then, the City of Eugene learned they were not an island when Peace Health located their hospital in Springfield, and now Eugene does not have a hospital, and so, like, the fixed goalpost rule, under that, when they submitted that complete application for Marist, the City of Eugene couldn't have changed that zoning in order to prohibit it.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, they did.
They did.
Right, try to ask them through.
No.
Was it just bad faith, that they, that Peace Health just went, we were leaving?
Well, I, my recollection is that they wouldn't allow it at the Marist location, and then after Peace Health announced that they were going to go to Springfield, Eugene was then like, oh, well, we'll allow it at the Marist location, and Peace Health was like, too many games have been played, we're knocked, that, uh, you know?
I've worked with the planning department in Eugene, they-
I've worked with the- I've worked with the planning department in Eugene too. Sometimes, um...
Yes, you, you cut up, you cut up your paper and use the backs of it and create little pads of that paper.
Yeah, there's some really interesting law that came out of Eugene, and there's about to be more because there's a diesel recycling facility here at Railroad and God knows. But I'm not working on that, but, um, no, I was like, no, thank you. Um, that's in the problems I had underneath category, and it's a two hour drive. Um, so the, I got called by a counselor. Um, easiest problem to solve is the problem you don't have. Okay, so clear and objective requirements. This has gotten, the state has grilled down on this clear and objective so much. And for quote unquote needed housing, which is almost every housing, if you don't make the decision based on clear and objective requirements and you reject it, you have to pay their attorney's fees. So it is really important that we have clear and objective, um, and all...
My, my sense is it basically says, we don't have the right to reject.
Well, so there, there...
On this particularly middle housing thing.
Yeah, and there's, in the governor's bill that you have to consider adjustments. And, uh, your reasons for not providing the adjustments are like public health. And like how are setbacks public health? Though I guess if someone's driveway, I mean, driveway isn't law. I mean, it, it just created so much uncertainty in the law. And it's, it was already so hard to process this according to state law back when it was like in the character of X, which if you've been to Sisters, that's what they had. Like it had to, like, that's why the gas station looks like an old west, you know, town. But you, to the extent that you want to do that, you can. You just have to have the code language that specs, these are the only sightings that are acceptable, only right angles, I mean, whatever it is, you have to come up with a way to allow someone that's never been to that city to read through your standards and understand that that's what, like, in Gerhardt, you want wood shingles as the exterior. You can't say in the character of Gerhardt. You have to define for them what that character is. So you can do it. Um, it can be really hard to do, but the decision needs to be made, made off of those clear and objective requirements. Uh, can't apply the, um, non-clear and objective unless they're asking for like a bonus. Like if, if they're allowed five stories, but if they have a bonus story that's an option and that story is six, which happened in Milwaukee, the, the standard was compelling architecture. And I was like, well, um, this is a bonus, so it doesn't have to be clear and objective. And the thing about architecture is that what was compelling at one time may not be compelling ten years later. And then it might be compelling again, like mid-century modern. And so you're not setting a precedent if you allow some, if you say something's compelling architecture in year one and then five years later say we have a building that looks identical to that, that's not compelling architecture. But that only is applicable if you're doing like bonus stuff that they're not allowed under the code. And even then, it's really better to have it clear and objective. Um, and simple in concept is always best. Um, it can be really challenging, though they got it from Sisters. Um, so, I mean, you can read that code and you're like, that's what I'm saying? So they, uh, John Prigani did that.
Oh.
He did all that code. All right. So constitutional issues. Uh, taking as a government appropriation of private property. Under the state and federal constitutions, the government must provide just compensation. We've never used eminent domain here. People talk about eminent domain a lot. If we were to use eminent domain, we would need to provide them with just compensation. I can't imagine we're going to use eminent domain in the future, but you never know what's going to happen.
We did it in, in Tigerd, once.
Once. Cause you had to because the lender would not release the lien on the property unless the city used... So it was a friendly eminent domain because the property, I was, I remember this well. Cause the property owner wanted to use it, but the lender wouldn't, so we had to use the eminent domain and I had to write a letter, I mean, so that they could get the...
And we still got people screaming and yelling.
So angry.
Oh, we had a, we must've had fifty people in, the Tigerd council chamber is totally small. There must've been fifty in the, in the group, and there were an equal amount out in the hallway.
And that was like during the whole urban renewal thing. So it was just, yeah, wow, I remember that. That was pretty bad. Not top twenty, but, you know, not insignificant. Um, so, um, can be the result of regulations that limit the use of the property. Um, that's one reason eminent domains is used. Uh, more commonly can be the result of exactions, meeting conditions of approval that require transfer of private property, uh, road dedications, construction improvements. And these require, um, two requirements. Um, these are what, when we talk about Nolan and Dolan, these are Nolan and Dolan nexus, uh, the relationship between the exaction and the underlying regulation of the property. So if we're gonna add a bunch of trips to the, some large parcel and the state, the engineers are like, we need a traffic signal, then there's, because of all these extra trips, that's the nexus portion. We have all this extra traffic, so we're going to require you to put in a stoplight or a stop sign or whatever it is. Uh, the second one is, is Dolan, which is Dolan v. City of Tigerd. Um, the, it's now a gym, back then it was Elmer Duds.
Oh, yeah.
They wanted to expand their parking lot by like twelve spaces.
And old Mr. Dolan.
Mr. Dolan, uh, and the city wanted a bike path. And Mr. Dolan, represented by Donald Joe Willis, who you don't wanna see on the other side of the Landry's case, was like, that's not fair. And Tim Ramis was like, yeah, it is. And they went to the US Supreme Court and, um, Ramis's argument was rough proportionality. The exaction had to be roughly proportionate. And the Supreme Court's like, yeah, that's right, and this isn't. So Dolan wins.
But the irony is when it went back and used those standards, it fits the standard.
Yeah.
That's what the irony was.
You know, Keith wrote, uh, Keith was working for Tigerd, he wrote the Stafford Court for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's when you, when you require the property owner to do something, it is a result of their development. So when you say, you can add that subdivision, but you have to include this street and new sidewalks, you have to build that required of you.
You can do that, you can, you can do that, but you have to take care of stormwater. That's an exaction.
Yeah.
Yes. So it's, it's like, so the exaction has to have nexus. Um, those are rarely offsite, those are almost always onsite unless you, um, unless you can accommodate it onsite. So you, it has to be offsite. Um, and, um, yeah, and it can't be to like make up, necessarily to make up for some past thing the city didn't get. Um, it really needs to be directly related to that application. Um, so, questions?
What are you talking about? Um, one question, one question that just kinda came, came up and, um, when we approved a concept plan, which we did actually for the town center, we didn't approve, you know, our houses. Um, we approved a concept plan. Um, what, what does that give the developer?
So it gives the developer some certainty in what they can build. So when we're doing, we're doing, Metro gets to set minimum density. We get to say that that density is going to be across this whole area. So if you look at net developable acres in a, in an area, then our density will be X. Um, and then sometimes because of topography, so if, if the Stafford Triangle ever comes into the urban growth boundary, the areas that are south of the Tuolton River are flat. So that's where you can put the most, uh, the most number of units, so the densest units. If you have steep slopes that are still buildable, you would want, uh, much lower density. But if you're doing it all at once, you can net it all out. So you can say, this area doesn't meet the minimum density, but because this area exceeds the minimum density by a lot, we can, and you, sometimes they transfer density credits or they do whatever. Um, but that's how, that's, so the, the concept plan gives the applicant not complete certainty, but knowing our ID, we just, we're gonna get to put like a thousand units here.
Yeah, okay, so, so, um, yeah, they've like, okay, we can build six here and ten here and we'll all get it. But, um, at what point can we...
Um, have something to say about kind of what's, what's being built? Like, what, what, so where I'm going with this is I'm seeing every single lot in town center and also in the new place, there's no, nothing accessible. Um, everything is three, three-story narrow townhouses as far as the eye can see.
Do you remember I was asking about for a floor?
Right, and, and I was too, but you asked first. And, um...
And so is there any point that we have any, um, power or authority to say, you gotta put this stuff in?
Yeah, I mean, if that's, if it, this is, if it's required under our code and it's clear and objective.
I see it's not in the code, the same thing about affordable housing. We don't, we don't mandate it, so they're not gonna build it.
A lot of these are just design choices that they're choosing not to.
Yeah, I mean, the only upside we've got is in that plan with, with the retail, there will be elevators through this.
In, in that one?
A big building, that's it.
Yeah.
So, so just, this isn't, this is just, uh, just objectively true. Um, if you look at, i- i- in a functioning market, like your cost per square foot, assuming that there are no like major labor issues or whatever, your cost per square foot's gonna be fixed. The cost of the lot, so the, the developer, let's say they build a, they build a, they buy two acres and, and they have to have a certain road and, and whatnot. So they can get a certain number of lots out of that. The cost per lot, per finished lot's going to be whatever it is. The, um, the SDCs are going to be whatever they are. In some communities, the developer is two hundred fifty thousand dollars in before they're even in the ground to build the house. And then the only way that they can get a house that appraises enough to get the mortgage is have a larger house that's more square feet, which is why we're getting these, I call them tall skinnies, which are these like, they look like a townhouse, but they're detached. And they're like, and it's, I, I mean, we all have different aesthetics, not mine. Uh, but, yeah, they, they, that's the only way that, that it will pencil for the, for them.
And, and to have it be affordable for anybody.
And then the, the problem is that there's a real lack of developable land in the region. Like if you, I know Metro makes whatever findings they make, but like if there's region, if there's land in the region that hasn't been built, it's generally because it doesn't have zoning or it doesn't have urban services. And as soon as the zoning occurs, and as soon as the urban services are at the property line, there's some outliers, I mean, there'll be a farmer, like Mr. Cruz, whose farm was on Cruzway, he didn't, that didn't give it all for a, a lot, for, a lot of it didn't happen for a very long time. I mean, I remember what's like, you know, totally built on one side and him being on his tractor. And, you know, that was when, that was still happening when I was in high school and, in the mid nineties. And, and that, that had gone in, in like nineteen, you know, eighty-four. So the Mormon church had sold all of theirs and Mr. Cruz hadn't sold any of his. So it can't, you just, it, it happens as it happens, but, um...
Oh, farm on Middle.
Well, there was a asparagus farm in Milwaukee too that was around for, for a very long time. Anyway, but like the areas in Damascus that haven't urbanized, that have zoning, it's because the, um...
That was south of France, wasn't it?
I mean, a cynic would say it's because it's not developable, but, um... The, the areas there, as soon as the urban services are available, then they develop. Um, and, and there's, you, if, if you're familiar with the Basalt Creek area of Intow, Intowalton, that came into the UGB in two thousand four. They got into a big fight over where the line would be between Wilsonville and Westland, or excuse me, Intowalton. It would, it, that did not get resolved for like fifteen years. Then there was a fight over, because the language said residential, trans, then going to industrial, where would that line be? And in the meantime, the area that was going to be residential didn't have zoning. Within a year, it, of it getting zoning, it's just gone like that, including tall skinnies. And like Metro was like, what's the special sauce? And there is none. They couldn't build because they didn't have zoning. It got built as soon as the urban services were available, unless you have a property owner that doesn't wanna sell, which happens more frequently than you'd think. And, uh, or, or a church, sometimes churches, you know, they're just, so unless they're willing to grant a utility easement across their land, then development, that's where it stops.
There's no way to stop tall skinny stuff.
Not now.
Not under the governor's new land use bill, which is, is ambiguous, okay? I've been having to deal with that in another jurisdiction. And the person wants to go from a R1 to R2, which is more density, it's slope, it's not a good candidate for upzone. This is a city that routinely upzones stuff, so we have a strong record of upzoning, which is great, cause this is not a good candidate for upzoning. And they're like, that's less units than we would be allowed if we split all the lots and put duplexes on them. And it's like, yeah, and there's, there would be no, there's no parking. So it's like, does that rise to a, a public health? And like, shouldn't this city be able to say, there, there's all this land that's a really good candidate for a upzone, and this land which has eighty feet in elevation, over ten acres, is not a good candidate for an upzone? And there'll be no place for these people to park, and they'll park in the adjacent neighborhood, and that's just gonna cause conflict. And the road needs thirty million dollars in improvements, and that's a, that may, we don't have a Nolan problem, but we have a Dolan problem, cause that's not roughly proportionate. Like at what point, state of Oregon, should we be allowed to say, we prefer not? And the answer is, every session, they make it harder. And then like, as someone who has to interpret this, and then a city facing attorney's fees potentially, if I'm wrong, it's just, it's very frustrating. And, and it's frustrating for cities too, and it's frustrating for neighbors, and it's frustrating for everyone. I'll get off my soapbox.
Um, just one comment. We are very lucky that we got our urban area in when we did, because River Terrace Two, we had to have minimum density of ten units per acre. River Terrace Two is twenty units.
That's gone very often.
So be glad and pass it on to your friends that how lucky we were to get it in when we did.
And if we hadn't, it would have very likely been taken by Tigerd, and then twenty acres, or twenty acres.
So...
Right.
Can you imagine if it was twenty acres, twenty units per acre minimum?
Cause right now, I'm looking at the, um, at the park meetings, at the public meeting, I noticed how big the lots are in the manufactured home development compared to how big the lots are going to be in ours, and I, I think I'm gonna love the air. Cause, yeah.
Okay, are we done? Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, we have to have a motion, oh...
Nope, we are not done.
We, we had, uh, made an agenda revision to discuss, um, the, uh, storm waters, storm water and clean water services. And what I would suggest is that we defer that motion to have it on the next agenda. is that we defer that motion to have it on the next agenda, as something as, like we talked about, a discussion, not to make a decision, but to do it early in the meeting and put it on the next agenda. Is that acceptable?
I think that'd be a great idea.
Yeah.
Dean, do you think that's an acceptable way to approach it?
Ooh, I'm gonna take what I learned early, early, an hour ago, since we're looking for something that the community is concerned about.
Yes.
You know, regarding ongoing erosion issues, the community is concerned, is erosion's visible, significant, been contained for several years.
Yeah.
The community doesn't understand what King City's doing to address the problems. The Planning Commission wants to understand what the staff is doing to address the issues. The Planning Commission wants to support staff in addressing the issues, and the commissioners want to be proactive, not just react to what staff spring them. River Terrace One handled stormwater in an innovative way. Can King City use an example like this to be innovative and proactive? Well, this fits exactly what we were talking about. I second that motion.
Yeah, well...
Okay, well, we'll talk about all those things on the agenda item next time.
What brought it up was, when we had the briefing by Clean Water Services, they were talking about the grants.
Exactly.
And, there's been an issue at council about approving applications for grants. So that's why we want to have this.
From whatever, carry you motion?
Yes.
Seconded.
I seconded.
You have on the next agenda.
Right. And if we don't get to an agenda item, generally unless we have to process that tonight, it just automatically goes to the next agenda. But I think it's important that everybody let the community know it's going to be an agenda item, and I suspect there's gonna be a lot of community interest in that.
And we will have a workshop scheduled for March twelfth.
That's the second.
Yeah, March twelfth.
That would be...
When we would talk about the stormwater at the park, and we also have the developer on hundred and thirty-seven.
But we can't do that only at a workshop.
Well, are we, what are you asking to vote on?
It's gonna reach consensus on coming up with a plan. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be making a decision. They're trying to figure out how to move forward.
Yeah. You can like tell me to...
I will not leave in town on March twelfth.
I will not be in town.
I will not leave.
Okay. It's going to end.
I'm sure I'm gonna miss the meeting.
Couple people meet with you and talk about...
Does someone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I seconded, I booked there.
Right.
You know, I've always thought it's really...
It would be helpful to tell the council, the Planning Commission...
I know, she just adjourned the meeting.
I'm adjourned to me.